Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Hello? Would everyone please, uh... We are starting the meeting. We are... This is September 9th, Tuesday, September 9th, just a little after 1:00 p.m., Defuniak Springs Boardroom, and we are starting our BCC meeting. And I'm going to ask if Mr. Commissioner Gladwell would lead us in the invocation.
Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, and we thank you for all the blessings you've given us and the grace that you've granted us. And we ask now that you would be with us as we move forward and conduct your business, that you would help us, Lord, to do it in your will and in the best interest of our people. And we just ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good afternoon, and thank you for being here. It looks like we have a full house again. That's wonderful. I would like to say that there are four commissioners in attendance today. Commissioner Anderson is not with us today. Also, Brian Kellenberger, our county administrator, is not with us today. So I know that he usually starts out these meetings asking that you all turn your phone on silence, and that if you feel the need to speak to each other, if you would take it outside in the hallway, and if you're going to be really loud, if you'd take it further down the hallway. Because a lot of the reason is so this young lady over here can hear, and she can make the notes for our meeting minutes, and we want to make sure that we get those correct. So... And also, please note that for citizens' request, it is not a question and answer. It's an opportunity for you as a citizen to come up and tell us what your issue is, and then that way, the appropriate office would be in touch with you at a later time to make sure that they're fully aware of everything, and so that you get a complete good answer instead of trying to do something on the spot. So with that being said, are there any elected officials in the audience? No? Okay. Well, thank you all. Consideration of additions and deletions. Did you want to start with that, Mary?
Yes, please. We do have one addition. It is an agreement with Unity to run fiber into the state attorney's office. There's no cost for the county for that, but since it is our building, we have to sign off on that agreement.
Okay.
We also have one deletion.
Hold closer.
Can you hear me?
Is that better?
Okay. We also have one deletion under Commissioner Gladwell. That's number 32. And we would also ask to move number 33 under Commissioner Gladwell to right before citizen request, right after the consent.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. So we will... Go ahead.
Motion to approve the agenda with the deletions and additions.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the agenda with the additions and deletions that were just mentioned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public comments. If there's something on this agenda that you would like to speak to, that you will not be here when we get to the item, you're welcome to come up now. You have three minutes to discuss. Does anyone have anything that they want to talk about that they will not be... That's on the agenda that you won't be here for? Okay. Seeing none. Okay. Do we have any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like item six.
Item six, which is the request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the resolution approving a building permit fee abatement?
I'd like to have it for discussion.
And we can move that under administration.
Anything else?
Motion to approve the consent agenda absent number six.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move number six out of the consent agenda and onto the regular agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Then we need an approval of the agenda.
We already did that.
In the...
We did it out of order.
Of the consent agenda. We did it out of order?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. That's okay. So we've removed six. So we're at citizens' request, but before we do that, we are going to... Ms. Commissioner Gladwell, would you introduce?
Yes, there's a move around the state to protect farmland from development and to ensure that moving forward, our grandchildren and children can enjoy the same benefits as far as seeing agriculture at work as we have. And so today, we have a special guest, Dr. Nathan Pilarde from the University of Florida, Extension Service, and he's going to present us a presentation on farm conservation easements and that program that has been developed by the University of Florida. So thank you for coming, Dr. Pilarde.
Thank you for the invitation, Commissioner Gladwell. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today and to speak before the Walton County Board of County Commissioners. For those of you that haven't met me yet, I am Nathan Pilarde. I am an assistant professor and extension economist with the University of Florida. I'm in the Food and Resource Economics Department. And today, I'm here to talk about agricultural conservation easement programs at the federal, at the state, and at the local level, how these programs interact and can potentially complement one another, as well as their implication. Before I get too deep into this, I want to make sure that we're all using the same definition and have the same understanding of what an agricultural conservation easement is. I apologize if I'm looking this way. I'm going to cheat off my slides over here. But an agricultural conservation easement is a less-than-fee acquisition of development rights on a tract of productive agricultural land. Easements compensate property owners for restrictions on future development of their land in perpetuity while allowing landowners to continue agricultural activities. There's a couple of key concepts here. One is that it's a less-than-fee acquisition. It is not an outright purchase or a fee simple purchase of land. This means land stays in private ownership. The property owner remains the property owner, and that land can be sold to other property owners. The landowners are compensated, so you have to have a willing seller and a willing buyer. No one is forcing... The government is not forcing any sale of land. It has to be willing and agreed upon by both parties. And finally, it is in perpetuity. Once a land enters a conservation easement, it is there permanently.
Would that help to move that... To have that tilted towards you a little bit?
Does that help? Is everyone hearing me?
You're fine. I mean, are you looking at something there?
Oh, I'm looking at the screen.
Do you need to have it tilted?
Oh, it's fine. I think this way, the crack is...
Okay.
As long as it's not too distracting for me to be hangled off to the side.
As long as it's okay for you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. The way I like to think of it is you have your property rights as a bundle of goods or a bundle of wood, as shown here. With a conservation easement, what you're doing is you're taking away that development rights while keeping the... While the landowner remains the owner of the underlying property surface rights. So all you're doing is just removing one stick from that bundle of wood, and the landowner remains the owner of the rest of the rights. So to help us understand agricultural conservation easements, it's great to start out with the incentives. Why would a landowner want to sell their development rights? And why do federal, state, and county governments offer programs to acquire development rights? On the private side, on the landowner's side, the two most obvious ones are direct compensation, so the landowners paid for those development rights, they are purchased from them, as well as tax benefits. These tax benefits come when that development right is sold or donated below what the actual value is, and the landowner can receive income tax benefits for that donation for up to 15 years after the development right is sold. There's also property tax benefits. So often, when you put land in a conservation easement, property values have been going up, the property taxes have been going up as that property value goes up. By selling the development rights, it lowers the property value, which means lower property taxes that the landowner is then responsible for. It's also useful as an estate planning tool. So when you're trying to pass land on to your heirs, you don't want to burden them with a large estate tax or inheritance tax when that happens. By putting land in a conservation easement, you are reducing the tax burden on your heirs when that land is passed on to them. And finally, it gives landowners control over their legacy. So say they want their grandchildren, great-grandchildren, et cetera, to grow up on the same land that is being used in the same way as it was when they grew up on it. This is a way that landowners can ensure that their great-grandchildren have the same property, the same experience that they had growing up. Some public benefits on the side of the governments that are offering these programs. It can be a useful tool for managing urban and suburban sprawl, because again, once you put that conservation easement in place, that land can't be developed, so you have that urban core, you have rural areas surrounding it. You don't want development to spread out, and you want to keep that land in agriculture so you can provide these programs, which incentivizes landowners to voluntarily put that land and set it aside so it doesn't enter development. It can also help maintain a critical mass of agriculture. So in agricultural counties, you have the ag economy, and you have upstream suppliers of farm equipment, fertilizer, feed, and then you have downstream packaging producers that purchase those farm goods from the farm gate. If there's not a critical mass of production agriculture in the county, that whole farm supply chain falls apart. You've got the suppliers leaving, as well as the processors and the producers leaving. So in order to maintain that critical mass of production agriculture, agricultural conservation easements can ensure that a certain amount of land within an area stays within agriculture, and that can help provide a foundation for that ag economy in an area. In line with that, it can help preserve that agricultural heritage. People grow up driving to and from town, going through ag fields. This is a way to preserve that, keep open space. And again, it keeps land on the tax rolls because it remains in private ownership. The county isn't acquiring the land outright. They're only... The county or the land trust that holds the land is only acquiring the development rights, so the landowner continues to pay property taxes and doesn't become a financial liability for the county. So there's some common misconceptions I've found when talking about conservation easements, just interacting with landowners, and I think it's good to address these upfront, just to make sure that we're all thinking about conservation easements in the same way. One common one is that, "Well, I'm worried that easements give government control over the land." Again, this is entirely voluntary agreement, willing seller, willing buyer. What the landowner is agreeing to is to make sure that the land is not developed beyond its current use, its current uses in agriculture. What they're saying is that it will not be developed for other uses beyond that, so I will not sell this to be subdivided. Beyond that, the landowner maintains complete ownership, complete management rights of the land. That includes keeping the land in production agriculture, the ability to change what type of crops that they are growing or agricultural practices, the ability to harvest timber, the ability to conduct agritourism enterprises, as well as the ability to continue any recreational uses on that land, such as hunting, fishing, et cetera. None of those things are being signed away when you enter into an agricultural conservation easement. There's concern that easements will open up land to public access. That is not the case unless the landowner explicitly wants to do that. Again, it's entirely voluntary. These easements are customizable, so just entering an easement does not open up the land to the public. Private land remains private. Descendants will not be able to build houses under an easement. Again, easements are entirely customizable. It doesn't have to be the entire parcel of land. You can set aside a parcel of land and say, "Hey, within this development envelope, I want to allow a second or a third home to be built." So just because you have a conservation easement on the land doesn't mean that you will not be able to build any houses on that land in perpetuity. Just make sure when you're entering an easement to set aside some land in advance, so you can say, "Okay, this is the property that my heirs are going to inherit, and they will be able to build houses on that land." Finally, easements lock in current land use. Economic conditions change. Maybe you were growing one type of crop, you needed to pivot to something else based on the prevailing economic environment, commodity prices, what have you. Easements are customizable, and agricultural conservation easements allow landowners to adjust as economic conditions change. So if you're growing something, operation viable, these easements are designed to do that. Again, the goal of agricultural conservation easements is to preserve agriculture, and the best way to do that is to allow that flexibility so that landowners can maintain a viable agricultural operation. Or if the farmer wants to retire and stop producing on the land, easements will also allow that. You do not have to keep producing on the land. You can simply maintain it as open space. All it's saying is that you're not going to develop on that land. So it's also important for landowners to know what they're getting into. There was a study done at Colorado State of landowners who started the conservation easement process but backed out of it, and they wanted to understand why landowners backed out of getting a conservation easement. And what they found is that overwhelmingly, the expectations of landowners did not align with the reality of it. So what they found that landowners were surprised about was that how lengthy the process is, and I've talked about this with multiple landowners. It can take one, two, even three years to get through the agricultural... To get through the process to place an easement on the land and get compensation for that. That is much longer than on the private marketplace, obviously. Second is that the process is the complex... Is relatively complex. You need to decide what the parcel boundaries are, you need to establish development envelopes, you need to do soil quality surveys, there needs to be appraisals. As such, it is a complex process. Technical and legal assistance will likely be necessary. So landowners were a little bit surprised by that. Third is that the process is competitive, and I'll talk a little bit later about how competitive that is for certain programs here in Florida. But not all applicants will be selected. And again, having technical and legal assistance can help landowners make their application as competitive as possible. And finally, funding is cyclical and subject to change. If you think about the Rural Family Lands Protection Program that we have here in Florida, which is one of the most robust agricultural conservation easement programs in the country, that program was started in 2002. It didn't really start enrolling land until 2009, and depending on who the agricultural commissioner is, funding has been pretty cyclical with that. So with that in mind, landowners who are considering agricultural conservation easements, a common concern is, "If I put my land up now, what if my property value goes up?", which is a very valid concern. However, just because your property value goes up doesn't mean that you'll receive a better offer, because next year, funding might be less, or it might be a more competitive process, and you have other landowners that get ranked ahead of you. So when I'm talking with landowners, I always say, "Yes, you need to consider what's going to happen with property value, but there's also a risk to waiting. If you wait, there might not be as much funding, or it might be a more competitive application cycle." So you need to weigh the risks with those benefits. So now I'm going to talk about some federal and state programs, specifically ones that prioritize cost-share eligible applicants. So these are programs that, at the federal and state level, will prioritize applicants if there is another program that they can cost-share with, specifically at the county level. The first is the Agricultural Conservation Easement Program from the USDA. It currently conserves about 25,000 acres of farmland here in Florida. And in their ranking matrix, when they rank all their applicants, they prioritize applicants that can show that there's a program that will cost-share with them either at the state or the local level. As far as state programs go, there's, as I mentioned earlier, the Rural Family Lands Protection Program. It currently conserves over 200,000 acres of farmland here in Florida. Just to give you an idea of how competitive this program is, there were 428 applicants to the program that made it through that initial screening in 2025. In 2024, for which there's the most recent year that there's available... Data is available, only 18 property closed. If we make a little few assumptions there, that means about 5% of properties make it through each year. So they select approximately the top 5%. So it is an extremely competitive program to get into and to be selected for. However, they do prioritize applicants that can show that there's cost-sharing either at the federal level or the local level. And I was at a meeting in Lake County where Commissioner Simpson spoke and was encouraging commissioners there to start a county program so that landowners in Lake County could have ... Be ranked higher in the priority list when it comes to the pool of applicants. I'm assuming the same thing would apply here in Walton County. So the Florida Forest Legacy Program, they focus specifically on working timberland here in Florida, and they conserve over 3.1 million acres of working forest land. Again, they prioritize applicants who can demonstrate cost-sharing opportunities, as well as the Florida Forever Program. There are already counties that have agricultural conservation easement programs, and again, applicants to these programs from these counties. If you're a landowner in those counties and you apply to these programs, these programs add points in terms of their ranking, so landowners from these counties will have an additional advantage when applying. This includes very robust programs in Volusia County and Alachua County, and that graph there just demonstrates all the allowable land uses. So some of these programs are more broad, and they allow all types of agricultural practices, whereas other county programs are more limiting. But in Volusia and Alachua, there's programs that really protect any type of agricultural operation there. I could go on, but I wanted to keep it as brief as possible to leave room for questions, and just thank you for letting me be here today.
It's really very, very interesting. I had no idea. Any comments from any commissioners? Any questions?
What we would like to do is, if the rest of the board is amenable, is that we would instruct the county attorney to bring us back a draft ordinance that would apply to this, and ask Dr. Pilarde if he would assist Mr. Adkison and...
And I've already reviewed a draft resolution. Dr. Pilarde is looking at that as well and is assisting on that. We'll be glad to bring back the necessary elements. I believe a resolution will be your first step, an ordinance will be after. So what I'd ask is, if the board is at least comfortable or wants to pursue this, to allow me to get with Mr. Kellenberger, obviously he's out this week, but to get with Dr. Pilarde, we've already had one meeting with him, and local representatives, so that we can bring you back an idea of what a program like this would look like.
I think that's great. I think it's a wonderful idea, and I appreciate you taking the time to come up here from Gainesville to enlighten us, because I'm sure a lot of us here in this room had absolutely no idea. And so thank you very much for that. And I agree, we don't need a motion for that. It's just... It's direction, so...
We'll get to work.
Okay. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for letting me speak here today, and I'm happy to help in any way I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Drake, did you have any questions? No? Okay. Okay. Just wanted to make sure we covered everybody. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, thank you for allowing us to move that up where he can get out of town.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Safe travels. Thank you. Okay. Now we are on number 21, which is the Florida Forest Services Commissioners Report.
Yes, I believe Walter Bowers is here.
Yes. I think he's coming up.
Good afternoon, commissioners. It's that time of the year again for me to present the annual commissioner report for the Florida Forest Service. We have sent y'all all...
Would you let her know your name?
My name, Walter Bowers, B-O-W-E-R-S. We have sent electronic copies to all y'all's offices for y'all to have. Does anyone have any questions off of any of that before I begin? Seeing none. We're doing real well in Walton County. We still have a very robust landowner assistance program. We do a lot of plowing and landowner assistance throughout the county. That program continues to hold us on against any other county here in the panhandle. The state forests is doing real well in the south end. The control burning is going real well. We're really... Our education program is really going well down there. The forests are in good shape in Walton County. We don't have anything to really bring to y'all's attention of any concern. Equipment-wise, we're doing real well. Not really anything to report of any concern, so...
That's good news.
Yeah. So everything is doing as good as can be expected for us, and if y'all don't have any questions for us... Mr. Curry, I do apologize. I did realize I always try to come out and meet with the new county commissioners within about six months of them getting elected to let things calm down and let me come meet with them, so they had put a face to the agency, and I did realize...
They'll never calm down, sir.
Fair enough. But I will be reaching out to your office to try to come do a one-on-one with you, just to put a face to the name, so...
Thank you.
But y'all all got my contact number. Y'all know how to reach me if you need anything, and we're here to serve anything y'all need.
I have a question. How are the bears?
Our agency doesn't regulate the bears. That will be a Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission question.
But you see a lot of them out there, don't you? I saw a video the other day of one of them.
I did. I have heard some social media photos and videos are going around of them, but unfortunately, I don't get to get out in the woods as much as I used to as a young ranger. I have to do more administrative duties these days, but no, I don't... I don't have much to report on that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, thank you very much for all that you do. We really appreciate it, and thank you for the update, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, ma'am.
No news is good news, right?
There you go. There you go. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you very much. You as well. Okay, we have, let's see, another citizen's request, request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a resolution recognizing September 14th, 2025 through September 20th, 2025 as Forensic Science Week. Melissa, would you like to take that?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioners, we received this request from our District One Medical Examiner, Dr. Deanna Olesky, and she is here today in the audience along with some of her staff. I know she has Dr. Pagaz, who is an associate medical examiner in the office, Dr. Crane, the forensic anthropologist, and Dan Schibler is also here. He's their administrative director, and you may remember him. We've seen him several times here at the meetings, and there are some of her other staff here. But I wanted to go ahead and read this resolution recognizing September 14th through 20th as Forensic Science Week. Whereas the practice of forensic science is a vital public service that plays a critical role in the investigation of crimes, the exoneration of the innocent, and the administration of justice, and whereas forensic science professionals, including those working in medical examiner offices, provide essential expertise in postmortem examinations, forensic pathology, toxicology, anthropology, and other specialized disciplines that contribute to public health and safety, and whereas the dedicated employees of the District One Medical Examiner's Office work tirelessly, often under difficult and emotionally challenging conditions, to ensure the accurate, timely, and compassionate investigation of deaths occurring under unusual, suspicious, or violent circumstances, and whereas their commitment to scientific integrity, objectivity, and excellence helps to support law enforcement agencies, the legal system, and grieving families while upholding the high standards of professionalism, and whereas National Forensic Science Week, observed from September 14th to September 20, 2005, provides an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the contributions of forensic science practitioners and to raise public awareness about the importance of their work. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Walton County hereby recognizes the week of September 14th through 20th, 2025, as Forensic Science Week in Walton County, and encourages all residents to join in expressing gratitude and appreciation to the employees of the District One Medical Examiner's Office for their dedicated service, professionalism, and enduring contributions to the well-being and safety of our community.
Wonderful. Thank you. Would you all like to come forward? And if anyone wants to speak, feel free. If you have something you'd like to say, we appreciate all your hard work, and then we'll go down and get a picture taken with you all.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'm the designated spokesperson today. We just wanted to thank the commission here for recognition of the work of the Medical Examiner's Office. It's a lot of times thankless work and dealing with some of the most unexpected and tragic consequences, and the team does a great job. So we thank you for the opportunity to be recognized here in front of Walton County and for the service that this team provides to your citizens. And thank you for the support on the building. I showed Commissioner Gladwell the picture before. We're vertical... We're vertical out of the ground and should be hanging walls on the facility next week.
Wonderful. That's great news. I know you need it.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. Let's go down and take a picture.
Chair, can we get a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a...
I'll make the motion.
For that, I'm all ready to go.
Maybe we'll forget. So let's make it...
Got a motion and a second? A motion, he's seconded.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Now let's get a picture.
Great, thank you.
What is your name?
Dan Schibler.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Commissioner, can we go?
Yeah.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys just...
I'm so short anyway.
Melissa's coming in.
Yeah.
There you go.
That's a big roof. You stand in the back of the roof. Okay. Got everybody in, big smiles in three, two, one. Got it for me?
I'm gonna take one, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Less than a year.
Less than a year. He said less than a year? That building will be ready. They've needed that for a long time. So thank you all very much. Safe travels. Okay. Mr. John Owens.
Name is John Owens, and thank you, Chair, for the, and Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. What I want to speak on was the current quasi-judicial order 2025-7. I understand the concept behind what was done. You know, I understand where you're going with what you need from the ALJ, our special magistrate. But the one issue we would like to look at possibly as an amendment to that is on paragraph C, I believe, on the public comments to the county commission. I know people can speak to the planning commission. I watched the hearing that went on yesterday, the first one. The ALJ did, and I call them special magistrate, ALJ, they did open for public comment. But what I found is, and I know from talking to people, they want to speak to you. You are the people they elected. You are the people that really make the decisions that affects their lives. And we think that would be good if, once a recommended order comes back to the commission, it's good posted on the website, the next meeting where it is going to come up, that those individuals are allowed, even though it won't change and you don't have to respond, it would be allowed for them to actually make comments to you so you can hear what everybody is, how it's affecting their personal life. Because when you listen to these, like yesterday, it's, a lot of people's lives are affected. And it would give you the opportunity to as well, I believe, if you see things happening over time, it'll be your only chance really to hear what's going on to a degree, and you can come up with ideas. You see something maybe going wrong, something could be changed or made better. It would give you that opportunity to hear the people, what their concerns are, and to make those changes. So that's one area we're asking that you possibly look at changing, is allow people to make that comment from the county commission, even though it won't affect your ability to accept or reject the ALJ, special magistrate's order. Also, too, yesterday was the first day one of these hearings, hearings took place, Eastside Nurseries, I believe it was. I watched it, and I do encourage you, each of you, possibly if you get time, to go back, watch the video, see how the process went. Overall, the process went as we expected. The one interesting thing was, I did note that when the county made their position, they basically put forth a staff report on the issue, and nowhere initially or during that process did they mention about the planning commission's recommendation not to approve the project or defend that decision. Now, maybe that's the way the process is going to work in the future. It's going to be more ministerial for the planning commission in that they will hear the, do the judicial hearing, quasi-judicial, close it, do public comment, and then just automatically forward it to the ALJ to be heard in a hearing. So that's something we weren't sure about. But the other side is, too, it is going to be a quite onerous process for the citizens. Now for them to actually get something into the ALJ's record for evidence, they have to come out, get their own experts, come in, be heard by the ALJ, and Judge Van Winkle was very, very good at hearing everyone and what they presented. And so it is going to be more arduous and more costly for the citizens now to come out and make their, their wishes known and actually be able to do something to get it presented into the record for evidence.
Okay. Thank you very much for, for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. This is, as we know, new to all of us, so, and I have not had the opportunity to watch yesterday's meeting.
I would encourage all of you to take the opportunity to watch the hearing. I believe that you'll find that while there are standards for evidentiary presentation, we've seen that in front of our meetings where the opportunity for the applicant to object to non testimonial or non-expert testimony or evidence can occur, but I believe the ALJ balanced that very well between allowing public comment even at her level, which is not something that is necessarily required. But if you go back and watch, I believe anybody who did want to have an opportunity to speak was given an opportunity to speak, to the extent that there were issues about whether or not something can or can't constitute evidence. That's going to happen at your level, too. I want the board to be very clear of that. If the ask is, and I think you've heard this from me and probably every attorney you've ever heard sit up here with this board, if the ask of the audience is disregard the law and turn it down because we don't like it, you're going to lose that case 100 out of 100 times in court on quasi-judicial matters. The law says it is not an audience applause meter. It must be based on competent substantial evidence related to the provisions of Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. What I would say is certainly what I've asked the board now for, since we started this, get a few of these under the belt, let's look at how the orders come back and look at what it is. You're being asked after the very first day, less than 24 hours into this proceeding, to make changes to how it worked, and with all due respect to the request, I will say pointedly, you've yet to have an order come back before you to even see how that would or would not work. I will say, if we do change and allow public comment on those orders, you might as well be prepared. The applicant, the applicant's attorney, the applicant's witnesses, and their experts will likely be paraded in front of you for yet one more attempt at that hearing to battle that. And if that's what the board wants, then that is your option. Perhaps it just makes sense that you not use the magistrate process anymore. If the board wants to hear the full hearing at its level, that is your call. I will say consistently of groups I've talked to that have used this elsewhere around the state, it has been incredibly well-received after the process has gotten started by both citizen groups as well as the boards. But I think I made it clear to each of you, you're going to love it or you're going to hate it once you get those orders back in terms of is this how you want this to work? Until you see one, though, you're not, it's, we're talking about it in a hypothetical. So I would at least like you to see an actual one where you can watch the hearing, see how the magistrate opines, see how the public comment is addressed or not.
Madam Chair?
Agreed. Yes.
Can we add, like you said, if it comes back to us? And I, I don't know the end result on this. When do we get a decision on that? Do they take it home?
20 days.
20 days?
Did she say 20 days?
Ballpark. 20 days.
Can, can we not put in part of that ordinance, when you're saying berating all the witnesses and everything, can we not put time limits on each individual if it gets the first and the second?
Well, you say, if it's just generalized public comment, yes, you can say everybody gets that three minutes, but understand, we're going to have to be rigorous. So that person says, I need two more minutes, or I need 30 more seconds, and we say, okay, and then the applicant stands up and gets cut at three, we've got a violation of our process. So what I would say is, it's going to be an all or none, and we need to be very rigorous, and it will be on the chair of the board, that the public's have to understand, well, this is an important issue, I just want a few more seconds. We aren't going to be able to do that when we're in those positions. We either have to be rigorous about it or not. Hence why many times, unless we have been under time constraints with very lengthy agendas, we have not set time limits when the board has been hearing quasi-judicial to give more flexibility. And that, there have been times we have, but broadly, we have not set time limits on quasi-judicial to avoid that issue. But I have no problem addressing that if that's what the board wants, and certainly that is a situation that we can look at. I would just be clear with the board, the board will have to be very diligent, that not a single comment made before you can factor into your decision about accepting or rejecting the magistrate's order. Your review will have to be on the record and the findings that were presented. So, for example, the magistrate enters a finding, and let's go the opposite direction, because I think everybody's sitting there thinking, well, you know, the magistrate's going to approve a project and the public wants it overturned. I'm going to go the opposite direction. The magistrate denies a project, says, I find that this should not be approved. The applicant comes up here, and there's one point of that magistrate's order that the magistrate hung her hat on to say, no, this is why it shouldn't be approved. And they put an expert right up there before you, an engineer, says, now, look, I know they said that, but they misunderstood this, here's this, 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 you should consider it. Well, you've now conducted a separate hearing outside of the magistrate's hearing. That will be a violation of due process to the public, and we would have just as much liability there. So I just want to be clear, people want to have the opportunity to express themselves. They have that opportunity at the TRC, which is a public hearing process that's not required by law whatsoever. They have it at the planning commission, and thus far, the magistrate has given them the opportunity there. If you want it at your level, that's fine, but I want the board to be clear, you're not going to be able to accept new evidence to change what's before you, good or bad. It's going to go both ways. But I assure you, you'll have people who will make that offer, especially if an applicant, a developer, has come before you and been told no at the magistrate level. They'll take that last shot to get a better record for appeal.
Can they speak at public comment about anything, correct?
They can.
So they could speak about a quasi-judicial...
Well, as it is, as it is written right now in the ordinance, there will not be public comment taken, is the way that was written into the ordinance, is it will not constitute a public hearing, nor shall public comment be taken. Under your current rules, the public hearing, if there is a public hearing, you're not allowed to take public comment about public hearings. So no, they can generally talk about the process, but they cannot talk about the specific project order or otherwise unless you change your ordinance. And also, change your adopted meeting rules. So it's not just the ordinance. Your current meeting rules prohibit that. And those are the ones that have been in effect since 2018, 2016.
And I understand what Mr. Owens is saying. I mean, you know, the, the process of talking to the commissioners has been skipped in all this, and, you know, maybe that was my fault for not understanding at all when we voted on this, but that, if there is a way that that can be done, I mean, I'd like to get, sit down with somebody and see if there's a possibility.
And what I would ask you, and I'm certainly fine with us looking at it, what I'd ask you to do is, let's let the first one come before you, let's talk about it. I can assure you, nothing is going to stop the public from sending you direct comments, calling your office or otherwise, wanting to talk to you, and yes, you're going to have to disclose those as quasi-judicial ex parte communications as you always do. The point of this was to create a process that increases the public's right to participate beyond the minimum required by state law. And I do want to call back to that. State law right now, the public participation requirement in meetings does not require the public to be able to speak on quasi-judicial proceedings. So there are places around the state that do not allow any public comment whatsoever. It is a pure judicial proceeding. If you don't get called as a witness by one side or the other, or you do not get qualified as a party, you don't get a say. We have gone, in my opinion, above and beyond in Walton County for years to give the people every opportunity to speak. And if the desire for the board is to be able to have the public have an opportunity to be heard, then we will certainly do so. But I just would caution the board, we need to make sure that we're not basically creating a third and fourth tier of hearing that will foul the process after we've gone through this.
And I watched some of that meeting, and I saw where, you know, a citizen had to, I guess, put forth their own money to get an expert to speak on, on the subject. I mean, I just think that's, I don't know, I find something almost wrong with that, that, you know, the county has their representation, the applicant has their representation, and then the citizen should have their representation through the county, but they have to go forth and get someone else and pay for it out of their own pocket.
Well, Commissioner, if they want to come before you and offer their public opinion and just say, I'm a public, I'm going for a citizen's comment, that comment does not on its face constitute competent substantial evidence. If they wish to offer expert testimony to rebut what is being presented, that is the way quasi-judicial enjuice works in every county in the state of Florida and across much of the country.
And it may be right, but I...
And they would do that before you, too. It would not matter if it's a magistrate. I want to be very clear, if they want to offer expert testimony, now, if they, they don't have to, I mean, certainly if somebody's qualified as an expert on their own, they can get up, give their credentials, and just like the magistrate did, I think y'all have heard many times before, the chair will accept testimony and decide what weight to give it. And we've always been very judicious about allowing that. A magistrate appeared to do that. What I would say is that most of the time, if you look at how this happens elsewhere, when there are challenges to land development proposals, somebody does bring an expert to offer testimony about compliance, whether it's a planner to talk about the code, an engineer to talk about engineering issues. You'll actually see more expert testimony offered through non-legal representation than through attorneys in many of these challenges. And so what you saw was a group yesterday did in fact bring an expert that they chose to bring to provide expert testimony. If there was no competent substantial evidence, if it was just lay opinion test, lay opinion testimony, it's entirely possible the answer may be, well, none of that's enough to decline a project if it meets the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. In fact, under the law of the state of Florida, it would not be enough. So that's true if it's before you, too, though. And I've heard that criticism. I've had citizens that have talked to me about this, said, well, the board can hear the public, and they can absolutely turn down anything they want. I've said, no, that's not how it works. And they said, well, they have the right to do it, and they'll just get sued. That's true, but you're basically asking the board to break the law, is what I've responded, well, we want the right to do that. And that may be what you choose to do, but what I would say is, I was told before this happened that the public would be turned away at the door. I had somebody call me last week. You're got magistrate proceeding, that magistrate's going to turn people away at the door, just like the judges do in the courtrooms. They're not going to give us a chance to speak. I want to be very clear, go watch it. That's not what happened. Nowhere close. The public had a chance to speak. Let's get this order, Commissioner. And what I would say is, let's get this order, let's look at this, let's see how the first one comes back to you, and let's see if we can fine-tune the process. This can be an evolving process. Our commitment when we did this was to make sure the public had more opportunity to speak than it did before. And right now, they do, because I think we all remember hearings where attorneys have stood up and objected, 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 and the public had to go sit down because they couldn't speak. I want to make sure the public is involved in these processes, but it has to balance the legal nature of a quasi-judicial proceeding. And ultimately, this entire process may be something the board decides just as an ill-fated approach, in which case we'll bring it right back to this level, and we'll be back to doing things the way the board's done it for years and years and years. And I'm perfectly comfortable that we will be able to do so. I just truly believe that the ask we're getting now is the public wants an opportunity to express how this is affecting them, let's, even if we give them that right, I hope what the board understands. Mr. Owen was completely accurate. You still end up, if that's not grounds to overturn it, to have to tell them, thank you, but we have to approve this. So just to be clear, that may be what happens, and if that is what this board wants, to give the public those opportunities, we certainly could have it come at your level, too. I want to make sure the public is involved in these processes, but it has to balance the legal nature of a quasi judicial proceeding. And ultimately, this entire process may be something the board decides just as an ill-fated approach, in which case we'll bring it right back to this level, and we'll be back to doing things the way the board's done it for years and years and years. And I'm perfectly comfortable that we will be able to do so. I just truly believe that the ask we're getting now is, the public wants an opportunity to express how this is affecting them. Let's, even if we give them that right, I hope what the board understands, Mr. Owen was completely accurate. You still end up, if that's not grounds to overturn it, to have to tell them, thank you, but we have to approve this. So just to be clear, that may be what happens, and if that is what this board wants, is to give the public those opportunities, we certainly could have it come at your level, too. But it's basically deciding what role of a judge you play. But we'll work on that.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mary, you're filling in for Brian, so I think you're up next.
Yes, so number 24 is a request to award RFP 2510 for paid parking to the highest-ranked proposer, PCI Municipal Services, and request to begin negotiations, contract negotiations with that firm.
I'm extremely excited to see that we're moving forward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any comments from the board? Everyone, really happy to see this happen. We've been working on this for about a year or so. Yes, public comments, Mr. Roark. Roark. Come on. I'm just trying to say it right.
Todd Roark, R-O-A-R-K. I don't have a question about granting the approval. I have a question more of semantics about the procurement process. So what are you basing your approval on? Were you provided the list of the applicants, the qualifications of the applicants? So you just blindly, based on just what I saw, you blindly approved the recommendation, which I trust Mr. Kellenberger.
I do, too.
But at the end of the day, it's trust but verify. So the procurement process has always been an issue for me, because I see a lot of gaps in the procurement law process of procurement services, especially for a government organization. So you accepted the recommendation, but what other vendors were out there is, has the complete due diligence and vetting process, the financial stability of this organization, has that been completed? What, none of that has been talked about. You just blindly accepted it, but what's the financial validity of that business? And perhaps also maybe able to.
Well, it's not a question and answer time, but it is, it is a process that has gone through.
So I think we need to understand, as the citizens need to understand, the procurement process for the county. Because right now, you blindly accepted it based on faith. So it's trust but verify, but you blindly accepted it, and I don't, I'm not questioning this vendor at all. I'm asking for clarification on the procurement process from someone that is an expert in the procurement process. For 35 years, I've done procurement, I've written hundreds and hundreds of RFPs, RFQs, RFI's, and have gone through the vetting process. All I'm asking for is, what is the county's process?
Go ahead, Melissa, if you'd like to respond to that.
Because otherwise, we can't trust, I mean, it's nothing, I'm just asking clarification of the process.
Melissa's going to go ahead and respond.
I do have just a summary, so I may have to follow up with you if you have any additional questions. But essentially, there was a two-phase evaluation on this one. Written proposals were received. We do these through online solicitation, so we hit a, we cast a wider net. We did receive 11 that submitted that were considered to be sufficient submittals. They have to give us all their, we have a list of the documents online, and I would really love to go through with it, do that with you, because that keeps us from approving a vendor that has not submitted all their required due diligence documentation. We did a two-phase evaluation. Written proposals were reviewed. The committee, which was consisted of five individuals with the county, they were shortlisted. The shortlist of the top five came in and did interviews, presentations, and there was a final scoring and ranking compiled, the weighted criteria, there was 100 points total. The technical and operational approach was worth 35 points, communication and user experience, 25, experience and qualifications, 15, and the financial proposal was worth 25 points. So those five evaluators scored independently. The scores were averaged to determine final rankings, and then procurement compiled and verified the tabulations. We do have more information, as well as all the submittals, if you would like to go through those further.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So did you independently look at the financial?
Did I?
Yeah. Who's, who has, you're the expert in the financial. So I just want to make sure that this company has the financial, because we're putting our eggs in a basket. What happens if our eggs get squashed? Because that company does not have the ability to stand up on its own. I mean, we're uncertain financial, the market changes every single day. So do they have the reserves? Do they have the ability to maintain, survive a hurricane, as an example? What, that's what I'm asking for, is that true financial vetting? Do they have any inner relationships with anyone in the county that need to be made public? Did they disclose that?
No, they do.
So that's those questions I'm asking, and I don't know if that's published anywhere. I don't know from a government standpoint, even if you have to. I had to have those provided. It was clear cut, there was no exception. So I'm just asking those questions.
We can send that to you, and I would love to get with you.
I don't necessarily need, well, I'd like to see it, yes.
Oh, I would love to give it to you.
But I think it's just a general transparency to the, to the public, so that when these things, because there's another one coming up, and I'm going to ask, I don't want to ask the same question, doesn't, with the park services, is that a RFP or what have you? I'm just, there's a lot of concern about the procurement.
I understand.
It's our money.
Yes, I understand. Thank you. I understand. Thank you. Melissa, is there anything that is online like that, where the public could go on and look and see those items?
I don't believe the actual solicitations at this point are online, but we can provide those. That would be something, upon award, that would be available for, it's public records requests. We could get those out, yes. There may be some financial information that has to be redacted that's confidential, but those are able to be requested. And as, well, you'll see the, the contract, some of this due diligence happens within the contract to provide terms that protect the county in case of noncompliance.
And also, for the record, certain documents submitted as part of certain procurements are confidential and exempt from disclosure up until such time as an award has been done. So we have to be careful with that. So that's why you don't always, sometimes you see the full proposals, sometimes you don't. If you're the review committee and the evaluation committee, you always do. But that's why you don't always see that. But yes, to Melissa's point, that's the other thing I want to say, is, in terms of financial performance, performance bonds, things like that, insurance, indemnity, all of those issues become part of the negotiation we then enter into.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to ask Tom Baker to come up and give an update on Section 8 housing.
Thank you.
Hello.
Thank you, the commissioners. I'm Tom Baker. I just want to briefly give you an update. I tried to do that initially on the Housing Agency and our situation as it stands right now. I've spoken with most of you, and I'll make this very brief. The Housing Agency was in 2024 listed as a shortfall agency. We survived that year by HUD coming up with the money to pay rents that we had under contract for the year. And so this year, we've also been classified as a shortfall agency, and HUD says that they may be $117,000 short in the month of December, paying the rents for the people who have, or the families that we have on contract. We have not had any indication that they're going to come up with this money, other than the fact that they've asked us to apply for additional funds, and we have done so. I have talked with Congressman Patronas's office, and as of yesterday, they have inquired about the possibilities of additional funds coming for this grant for the Section 8 housing for our area, and they cannot get any definite answers on whether there's any money that's going to come from the federal government to pay the rents in December of this year. That also creates some administrative shortfall, because we're paid by the number of families that are on the program. This is, it's completely a federal grant project. It is not anything that you've been asked to apply any funding to at this time. Having said that, last year, we did say we may be short administratively, and you agreed to help us with that. At this point, we can say that we have not had to use any money from the county to make payroll or whatever to keep the doors open. We still have about 300 families on this program, but we have not even taken an application from citizens in Walton County since July of '24. We have, we have no families on our 1,400 waiting list, family waiting list. None of them have we issued a voucher to. They are still sitting on the waiting list, and we have no families that are holding a voucher to find a home in our county at this time. So this is where we stand. We, we continue to keep the doors open. We hope to provide the service for these 300 families. We haven't have, but we are finding that through attrition, they are going away. I hope that we can maintain those for some time. But again, we have no indication of any additional funding that might come to support this grant that we have from the federal government. 50% of the housing agencies in Florida are under the same situations that we're in. So keep, keep in touch with the news and whatever. You'll hear probably when we do as to where we go with the housing situation in our, in our nation and in our county.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any questions? By the way, Commissioner Drake, I have not talked with, but most of you, I have, but I would be glad to come and talk with you at length as to the situation and what may have caused this shortfall, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you for the update. It's tough, tough times right now. Are you moving number six? Okay.
Yes, so number six is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a resolution approving a building permit fee abatement.
I requested just for discussion, Madam Chair. I didn't know if we could take a few minutes just to go through this process and how we get the reserves, what the money can be spent on, et cetera, et cetera. I've gotten a few phone calls, and, you know, I'm not an expert on it by no means. So if you, if.
Let's let Melissa start, and then I'll say a few things, too.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Melissa.
That's fine. The Building Department reserves, according to statute, you can carry forward no more than an average of four years' budget. There are some guidelines to what those funds can be used for. Overall, the Building Department funds can be used for enforcement of the building code. They can be used for capital improvements, such as a building for the Building Department, training for personnel. Once you get past those, you still cannot carry forward more than a four-year average. And that's not a total of four years, it's a four-year average annual budget. As you know, we have just completed the construction of the new Building Department facility. That was, that was done out of reserves, which was the intended, is a self-supporting fund. And now that that is completed, there is still some funding that is remaining in those reserves that is in excess of that amount. So the initial ask right now is just to abate those fees until those reserves get down to the allowable amount per statute. There have been other municipalities, that's how we got the language for the ordinance, is look how other places are doing this. And that's what's before you today, is simply to abate those fees for the next fiscal year.
Do we have any kind of process, like a yearly cap or a yearly, I don't know, report on reserves or anything like that? Or we just?
It's in the, it's in the act for the financial statements each year.
Okay. And can you use that money for employees for the Building Department?
For the Building Department, Building Department only. It's got to be used for enforcement of the building code.
All right. So was there any asks by the Building Department for additional employees or anything like that? I can't recall.
No, there, there's not. They, they were going to, they, they had some extra FTEs in there to help with attrition, and they've kind of got past that. They've gotten some additional employees. So those duplicate positions that they just had out there, where they could look for qualified building inspectors, a few of those have actually been taken away, but they, I believe they're fully staffed right now. And Billy's nodding to say that's correct.
So now, so now you're saying that that money's there, so if I'm a builder and I go up and I ask for a permit, I don't have to pay?
There were a few fees, and I would have to lean on Billy to say what those were, but there were a few things that would still be in effect, but for the majority of the fees under the statute that this applies to, they are abated, so they would not be charged.
And there's no kind of refunds for builders that, because I mean, I'd be a little bit turbed if I just, I paid.
I know.
Six months ago, and now all of a sudden, you know, Johnny, the other builder, doesn't have to pay, so I mean.
And that was something that we had looked at, and to see if there was a methodology that we could utilize, but honestly, we could not find a methodology to utilize. I could see, I saw where there was a city that gave refunds to their contractors, and I imagine, I could not find anywhere that had a fair methodology that really looked fair and comprehensive, and Clay might want to chime in on that one.
Well, everyone we've looked at, I don't know how it's not going to be labeled arbitrary and apprecious.
Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate it.
I don't know if I, I'm kind of going a little bit ahead of, of what's going on there, but I'm a member of the Community and Urban Affairs Committee, and one of the things that they're going to be bringing forth to the legislature is, is other opportunities to use that money. And some of the areas in the state of Florida are looking at things like fixing up homes that have been destroyed from a storm or something like that. So there are other things that they're looking for, but at this point in time, that hasn't got, we hasn't, it's just now starting, so it hasn't gotten momentum yet. So to the, to current day, we have to do what Melissa's suggesting is to abate those funds. So, but there's opportunity, hopefully, to make some changes.
So we need a motion? Do we need a motion, Ma?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more comments from the board? Todd?
I'm sorry.
Come on.
Todd Roark, R-O-A-R-K. May I ask?
Go ahead, ask me.
It's hard to ask you the question and not look at her.
Just go ahead, just go ahead and ask me.
So will you explain one, one more time what those fees can be used for? Is this limited to employees and the building?
The Building Department. Anything, anything Building Department.
I heard something about code?
The building, enforcement of the Florida Building Code.
Not code enforcement.
Not code enforcement, the Building Code.
The Building.
The application and enforcement, so issuing a building permits, contractor competency board, anything required under the Florida Building Code, the statutory regulations.
If this building was inspected for code, would that, I'm just still kind of lost with that.
So any, basically, the operation of the Building Department is the easiest way to think of this.
Okay.
So what does the Building Department do? Anything they do is what the funds could broadly be used for.
So all employee salaries coming or coming out of that, or through the, through the other budget process?
It's a self-supporting fund, so all of their salaries, their building expenses, everything is coming out of that.
Vehicles, gas.
Everything.
Vehicles, gas. So when you went through the budget process for FTE, you, you, those folks are not included in that because it's a self-supporting fund? So those FTE, do you see where I'm going?
That, that funding pays for all of the Building Department's FTEs, it pays for the entire operation. It's a self-supporting fund.
It is in the county's budget, it's just not paid out of the lower parts.
But it's, but it's separate, meaning those, those are already paid for by the self-supporting fund, the collection of the fees. The other FTE and HR, there's no income driver, correct? So those are, all right, so.
The only thing that is paid, like, we do have a cost allocation study each year, and the administrative costs that are applicable to the Building Department are charged to the Building Department, which would be HR, it would be clerk's office payroll, it would be the warehouse, anything they get from there, anything that, any solicitations, agenda items. We have an independent firm to come in and do a cost allocation study.
So do you have just a general off-the-top guesstimate of what that balance is right now?
The balance after, I know that they're going to have about $8 million.
Eight million?
I think it's eight, but let me go back and look.
Eight million dollars, okay. So the, the last question I have is, when is the last time a reserve study's been done across all of our books?
I have not seen one in a while. I don't think, I've never seen one across all the books.
Isn't there a requirement? I, you know, from where I've come from, there's an annual requirement for a reserve study. HOAs have to have a reserve study annually for reserves, so I don't understand the government requirement and why we're not having an accountant, CPA.
And there's actually in government, the GFOA.
It's not in there?
What's the statute say?
He said it's not in the Florida statute.
The Florida statute dictates what we have to do in terms of governmental compliance. We are required to go through annual auditing processes. Those reserve accounts are looked at there, but it's not a true reserve study the way you're thinking of. But that is the requirement of the county, is to go through the standard auditing process set forth by the state.
Okay. So, okay, so what's the, what's the control? What's the trigger for you that alerted you that we're $8 million and we're over? Is there a pre?
Well, they were building.
Like green, yellow, red?
They were constructing the building. I mean, we knew that we were, this was discussed back several years ago when the building project was initially started. So we knew that once they finished the building, we were going to have to recalculate and move forward.
Okay. So I just was curious if there was a control in place that says, I'm green today, next month I'm going to be, or next year I'm going to be yellow, and here I'm going to be red. I just didn't understand the process.
We can keep the four, a four-year average of the Building Department's budget.
So that's calculated annually.
So the trigger, the trigger to know that we've got to do something is when we exceed that four-year average of the budget. And we are, so now we have to spend those monies down and then we start over.
Are there other reserves that fall under the same process?
No, this is a very unique statute that was enacted several years ago by the Florida Legislature with specific requirements on it. And if we don't do it correctly, we stand the risk of having the money go back to the state of Florida. We just sheet it back up to them.
Well, Melissa, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Tabitha?
Yes, Tabitha Howard, H-O-W-A-R-D. Yeah, that really drew attention when I saw that to be on the consent agenda, because if my memory recalls, I thought that it was Danny and Tony, I don't know if it was last week or two weeks ago or whenever it was, where they were also concerned because they had friends that were calling them because the planning department was taking like up to nine months or something. There's people that, you know, need their building permits, and I didn't know if that could be used to hire staff and to help to approve the protocol for the building department with those funds.
We looked at that, we have tried to look at it because they are so closely related, but that is something that I looked at several years ago, and it was absolutely not.
They're separate.
You're talking about two different.
The planning department and the building department are totally.
The permitting aspect of planning cannot be funded through the building permit phase.
Okay, but it's still taking people like nine months, nine to 10 months to get it.
Not to issue a building permit.
That's not the building, that's the planning.
The planning side done is the challenge.
Okay, okay, now I get it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I believe we're at Shane Supple, are you here? With Parks and Recs?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello.
Hello. Shane Supple, Parks and Recreation Director, SUPPLE. This is a request to approve or authorize a chair to sign the merger agreement and amendments with four for credit card processing. Our point-of-sale system is requiring that we switch from Worldpay to their credit card processor. It's just a simple switch from the little machine that you swipe or tap to their processor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any change in funding for this as far as what it's going to cost?
No, ma'am, it's all, it's regular budget. That cost us a thing. They're requiring the switch, so they're paying the cancellation fee with Worldpay, and actually, our credit card processing fees will be a little bit less.
Good, okay.
So we'll keep a little more money.
Great, great. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Nope. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
You slowing up out there, Shane?
No.
Melissa, I think you're up again.
Yes, ma'am. This is a request to schedule and advertise a public hearing to consider renewal of an ordinance providing a levy against the hospital in Walton County, providing indigent care to increase funding and defray uncompensated costs associated with these services. This is the LIP ordinance and resolution that is requested by Doctor's Hospital, so they can apply for, they would pay the county that assessment, the county would turn the funding over to the state, the state would send more money back to Doctor's Hospital to help them recoup those costs.
Motion to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to schedule the public hearing. Any comments, any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Atkinson?
Madam Chair, item 28 is a request for the board to consider the formal request of the Escambia County Board of County Commissioners to waive the 90-day notice requirement for the termination of an interlocal agreement that was first entered into back in 2008 between the Escambia County Board of County Commissioners and Walton County. Similar interlocal agreements were entered into between Escambia County and San Rosa and Escambia County and Ocalusa. There's a statute that imposes, when we enter e-filing, a $2 filing fee on e-filing to help support the state attorney's office, the public defender's office, in-court administration technology initiatives. As it stands, just brief history, $1 of that $2 fee goes to court administration. We keep that locally, Escambia keeps one of their $2 locally, every county keeps one of their $2 locally. The other $1 is split between the public defender and the state attorney's office. Back in '08, when it started, 60 cents went to the state attorney's office, 40 cents went to the public defender. And what was determined in the interlocal at the time was that it would be most efficient to have one fiscal agent manage purchasing procurement of those issues, because the First Judicial Circuit is Escambia, San Rosa, Ocalusa, and Walton County. And since Escambia County is the center of the First Judicial Circuit for the operations, even though it's not the geographic center, that's why Escambia County did this. The state attorney and the public defender, the elected offices, got together, spoke to Escambia County, and their request was that they believe it would now be more efficient for each county to administer that dollar themselves and to allow them to work with court administration over the old $2 fee on a county-by-county basis. They presented it to Escambia County, Escambia County agreed. The significance of this, now mind you, Escambia County, under the provisions of this, it can be terminated by either party for convenience on 90 days' notice. So Escambia County has told us they're terminating it. This agreement is being terminated. The one fiscal agent's going away, I want to be very clear. It's not something we get to fight to keep. However, the significance of the waiver of the 90 days is that when this cap brought up, it appears that, like most interlocals, the assumption was it was a 60-day window, not a 90-day window. 90 days puts us after October 1, it puts us into the new fiscal year. So to make it easy, so we don't have to do two different things in the next fiscal year, the request is to waive the 90 days, so the agreement will officially terminate on September 30th, 2025, and then we will be administering our own $2 fee as opposed to $1 of our $2 fee. So my recommendation to the board and request to the board is to approve waiving the 90-day notice and agreeing to terminate the interlocal effective September 30th, 2025. Motion to waive the fee and, or waive the notice and not terminate the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, Vice Chair Curry, you're up.
Item 29, Madam Chair, I'm not sure if you have all the info, Ms. Mary, but just going by talking with Brian, I've been getting some phone calls about what's the status of the Grady Brown Park repairs. I did go by there a few times this past week, and they have demoed everything except for the pylons, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to keep those pylons and build, and using those, or no, there's, new pylons aren't going in. So I think right now we're at the demo stage, and I'm not sure when we're going to start putting it all back together, but I just want to give some kind of update, and if you had any more from your office, any kind of updates?
I believe Cody will be able to give you some information on that. The insurance company have started sending him daily reports on that.
Thank you, Cody.
And the insurance company is paying for this, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So kind of where we're at now, Cody Minor, Risk and Safety Manager. Demo pretty much finished today, they're pressure washing, but to kind of give you a background, like the timeline, how it's gone up to today, sorry, I've been a little under the weather lately, so. So July 24th, you know, that's when we got the agreement to synergy. August 13th, you know, the engineer's record came out for the structural assessment. They completed the demo drawings on 8/22, and then the 29th, they issued the permits, got started on demo the first, and then completed that today. So the next three to four weeks, they're going to be doing some additional structural assessments, scoping, design, and engineering. They've already got contracts with the architectural and engineers for the designs and drawings and all that, so within that three to four weeks, they should have another three-week expedited procurement process to get the contracts out to who's going to be doing the construction, and then they're estimating 60 to 120 days completion, so most likely potential for 90 days, once they get started. So worst case would be probably completed by March, you know, hopefully before February.
Right before spring break.
Any other questions?
Sounds good, appreciate the update.
And we get daily updates too, if you'd like to be added to that, but that's.
If you could just give me something, I don't know, every other week, just so when somebody calls me, I can, you know, and I don't want to bug you every other day.
I mean, I have some pictures here if you guys want them, but.
I do.
All right.
If you don't mind passing, you can just pass it to her and she can pass it around. So this is just going to be for a bathroom, we're not going to be a storage facility, are we?
We're talking with them about kind of improving where the source of that fire was to make it dedicated, like a mechanical for that camera system and stuff, so hopefully we won't have this problem again.
I think the problem was the ventilation, so hopefully we can put something in there.
They are, that's the plan, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you, hope you feel better. Thank you. Okay, let's see, you're up again.
All right, two more, let's see here. All right, pull it up. So shortly after I was in office, I had several conversations with Ms. Caitlin about the library needs, and we got around the roundtable from the previous county administrator along with a few other folks, and the idea was since Crosspoint would be moving into their own building whenever they get that built, that that would be a great opportunity for the library. As you see, it's, you know, we're using the city council chambers on certain events and everything because it's overcrowded in the library. So that would be a good spot for the library to go. And then Caitlin brought me the idea of the teen center, which I think is outstanding idea, and I'm going to have her come up here, I'm not going to steal her thunder, but I think this is a great opportunity to be proactive, since we are growing. She's got some great numbers that she can share with us. After she's done, I have a few asks, and hopefully the board will join me in those asks, so, Ms. Caitlin.
Hi, thank you. Katie Cerise, for the record, C-E-R-I-S-E, Library Director. Freeport is growing, as we all know, the county is growing, as we all know. We have not had any additional square footage added to our library facilities since 2001. So 24 years has been a really long time to not have much growth. According to the state statistic and the metric that they use, we are about 30,000 square foot in deficit of the square footage we should have to serve the population that we have. They use the metric of .6 square foot per capita. We average right now .25. So that is just a quick stat of where we are. The library usage, I know there's a graph in there somewhere, just the last three years, just specifically at Freeport, door count, circulation, and program attendance have all grown. I was at a conference about 18 months ago, and the idea of a youth-specific facility came about. In Oslo, Norway, there is a facility called Bibliotyian, where it is a space just for kids, just for teens, to be able to experiment and grow and learn and play and be together, where our libraries do not currently have something like that. So trying to figure out a way to overcome the issue of our space constraints that we have at our libraries, we found a vacant unit. It has never been anything since the construction of that building had the Freeport Commons. It is adjacent to the Crosspoint facilities, which would potentially allow for growth in the future, should that be the need and the way the board would like to move forward. But at this time, we do have it budgeted for this fiscal year. We also have a $26,000 donation from the Friends of the Freeport Public Library to go toward the build-out of that facility and opening a new facility to serve our youth in the Freeport area.
Nice, very nice.
And what I wanted to ask, I guess Melissa would be, once this comes to fruition, you have requested three FTEs, but could we schedule them but not fund them?
Yes, we absolutely could.
Okay.
We can drop those in there, yes.
And so the direction would be just to come back to the board to ask for funding for those FTEs when we're ready? Is that how?
If you're, the board is amenable, we do have some, because we've talked about the vacancies before, we could go ahead and look at the vacancies and see if there's funding available there when you're ready for it.
Okay, yeah. Talking with Mr. Alfred and his team, we're looking at at least a 90-day build-out. That's if nothing else happens, right? If they don't get pulled for other jobs pending any delivery of supplies and things of that nature and setup. So we would not be looking to hire in staff until at least January at this rate, if we begin with the fiscal year.
Now, we're talking about the teen unit, so the main library would obviously, I don't think Crosspoint has broke ground yet, so that's not even really in this per se, in this ask, other than we would like that facility when Crosspoint moves out. I wanted to get in line about six months ago, but I was advised by the previous administration not to say anything, but I want to make sure that you have funding or a timeline of funding, and we can get that out now, even though we're not maybe going to ask for it right now, but maybe next year's budget or whatever the case may be, when Crosspoint does actually move into their facility. You do have enough money for the teen center? You're shaking your head, yes?
As presented in the tentative budget yesterday, yes, we do have that money.
We did, we anticipated that there would be some costs coming up, so we left that in there. We did not include the FTEs because we knew they weren't being, would not be needed at October 1st.
Okay, all right. So at this point, can they start designing and start putting some hammers to some nails and all that good stuff? Okay. And then I'd like to have my ticket for the Crosspoint facility, so nobody cuts in line when they move out, so I want to make sure that that's explicitly stated here. And other than that, I think I can read the motion if we want, redo it again. I just want to make sure that you have all the funding and, you know, anticipations that you may see, because I don't want to come out and, you know, well, we thought it was 50, now it's going to be 95, and then all of a sudden, well, now it's 150, and so, I mean, I just want to get that all out in the open, and we know what to look for and expect.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, that library is too small where you're at. So, I mean, I think this is a great opportunity to be proactive, and we have the facility right there. It's not, we're not buying land, we're not having to buy a building or build a building, it's there, it's ours, I think we need to utilize it, so. And if there's any other funding here and there that you may need, please get with me so I can bring it back to the board. And, you know, I do have a little bit of office discretionary funds, I can give you a little bit of it, but I want you to make sure you tell this board what we need, and if there's any kind of timeline that you can provide with this teen center, I mean, I know it's right next door to me, but.
We'll keep you updated, we do. We're very hopeful to have it open sometime late spring, that again, is depending on any issues where facilities is unable to complete that build-out or we have any delay in furnishings. It's a relatively simple build-out, there's nothing in that facility, so there's no demolition or anything of that nature that'll have to occur with the budget that the county has in place, plus the additional funding donation from the Friends that has already been amended into the library's budget.
Can you tell them a couple of the stations, like the VR and a couple of other things that you would have in the teen center?
Yeah, sure. Several of the things that we already offer in our libraries, this would just be making sure that we have them available where they are in this facility as well. We'd have small study areas, rooms for gathering, but things like our technology that we have, we have VR, we have gaming computers, we have tablets and hotspots, things where they can explore and try out new technologies. We have 3D printers, we have laser engravers, we have all kinds of tech. We have robots, we have several different types of coding robots that are available for use to anybody that comes in our libraries at any time. But being able to have those in that facility so that our kiddos can really have a way to explore and innovate and just be kids and have a place that they can be and just work together.
Perfect. I look forward to it. Do I need to make several motions here, the FTE motion, the teen center motion, and the Crosspoint facility motion?
I do think we need three. At least those three. There may have been a fourth in there, but we're going to go with those three. I think that you understand the direction as, okay, she understands the direction of the funding, so we'll take that as direction, but let's start, let's start with the teen center.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to proceed with the teen center.
And dedicate that unit to it?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. I have a question, Mary. That's not the place that planning is trying to utilize.
No, it is not.
It's not.
It is not.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure that planning's got all the room they need as well. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Yes. Barbara?
Barbara Moreno, I have a lot of respect for the director and for the attention that she's putting towards this. That was my question, is where it's located, will the county be needing that space for any of the other governmental offices that we have? That was one question that I have. And if planning was going to expand, where are they going to expand to?
There is an area, you want to talk about that, Mary? We discussed that the other day.
So there is another unit, Guardian and Latim currently is in that, they occupy that unit, but we have plans to bring them back to Defuniac closer to the courthouse when they vacate. Planning and code will be able to utilize that unit.
Right in Freeport?
Correct. In the same complex.
And then I just want to make it clear that I want to thank Freeport for giving us that space for all these years. They're not throwing the library out, so I don't see an immediate rush to look for grounds for another library. I want to thank them for that. But the teen room, I guess I have some concerns, because you're going to need a lot of people and guidance and people there. I don't know how much staff there's going to be and how many teens, and obviously, parents are going to be dropping children off. Is this going to be more of a daycare center? I just have some concerns, and I guess down the road, we'll just look at it as it's fleshed out, as far as a teen center. That's my question.
Thank you.
Did you want to say something a little bit? I know there's a parent area when they first walk in, that parents can sit and stay and catch up on everything? And then there's also, that's what we're requesting those FTEs for?
Be without an adult in our library facilities. Anyone under 12 does have to have a parent. That would be the cutoff age for this facility. We also, in the entry, will have a gathering area where parents can, kind of like an adult lounge, where parents can stay if they don't want to leave their children and walk away from them, especially for those younger kids.
And then everybody has a library card back in my day?
And per our policy, any minor child, according to the state of Florida, is the responsible of their parent, is the responsibility of a parent or a legal guardian. So in our libraries, a child cannot get a card without the explicit permission of their parent, who must also have a card and be attached to that child. So we're not trying to bring in kids and let them just run crazy and do whatever they want. We do have acceptable behavior policies for all of our facilities that they will have to follow and policies that are already in existence put in place by this board.
Perfect.
You do a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, that was for the first, the first one. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, come on up.
Hi, I'm Christine Bacon, B.A.C.O.N., and this is my granddaughter Evelyn, and we are three generations of using the library, so she's going to go ahead and talk.
My name is Evelyn Valenzuela, V.A.L.E.N.Z.U.E.L.A. Things I like about the library is that homeschoolers have a place to meet up and there are summer reading programs, special events like annual programs and educational events. When I was living in Texas, my brother was able to go to a youth center. I cannot wait until I was old enough to be able to go. Things he was able to do included cooking, computer programs, sports and other fun things. I'd ask that the board consider voting for a youth center to be built so that I can have a space that is set aside for safe gathering and learning.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you. That's wonderful. Very nice to meet you.
If you all, children would stand up for one moment that are with the library for just a second, because I know not everybody's going to talk. So we just are very much in support, supportive. This is very meaningful for me. So I'm going to take my three minutes if you want to start over. But again, I'm Christine Bacon, B.A.C.O.N., and I just want to throw a couple stats to you. So, and last night on Facebook, there was a bunch of people rattling about these teenagers and the roaming around and everything, and one of the problems is there's no place to go, there's nothing to do. So, one main concern is the lack of opportunities to keep them busy. Currently, approximately 20% of Walton County population is under the age of 18. Throughout the United States, 54% of the ages of 13 to 40 visit a physical library. In Walton County, there are approximately 1,200 homeschool students, and I've brought a few of them with me today. So they all depend very much on these county libraries. Currently, I just, one of the things that's very important, especially at this moment and this month, is that there is a 30, excuse me, a 36% risk reduction when students use the library in drug and alcohol problems. That is very, very vital to what is happening throughout our United States right now. So that is really all I wanted to say. I thank you for your time. I'm, again, Christine Bacon. I am on the Library Advisory Council and I'm very thankful for that. So thank you for your time again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And thank you for the kids for being here today as well.
They did okay.
That was one of three motions, right?
Yes, that's just one.
So what's the second one?
We need to vote on that.
I'm sorry, we didn't.
Start with the first one about the teen.
We did the first one.
Yep, so all in favor?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Now the second one, would you explain that?
The FTE. So we want to not fund, but allocate three FTEs for the teen center when it's up and running.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second.
That will come back to the board, though, at the proper time.
It will, as far as the FTEs go, but I did also want to proffer to make sure that there is sufficient funding in case Katie runs into any issues. I'm looking at her accounts now and Katie stays on top of all of her accounts. And there is some additional funding. I do not believe she will spend all of the funding and if the board is amenable to it, we'll do, we could handle this like we do a lot of our smaller capital projects, put together her excess funding at the end of the year and roll it into that project so it can move forward.
Perfect.
We need another motion for that?
That's a different, is that?
That does not even need a motion.
I don't even require a motion.
You'll approve that with the roll forward.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the FTEs. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the audience on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, one more?
Last one is the use of the Crosspoint facility once they vacate into their building, into their newly constructed building.
To allocate the use of that facility as a director.
Yep.
On a motion?
Yep.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Caitlin.
And congratulations to you and the kids and Ms. Bacon. Thank you. Did you have anything else?
I have one more, ma'am.
Oh, you do?
But they're easy ones.
Okay.
I don't know if this is more, is Brad still here? I'm going to put you on the spot, Mr. Alfred. Alright. I'm not sure where I want to go with this. I went in there, we kind of met out there and went through the old Chalk Town Beach Fire Station. You want to pull up some of those photos? Kind of want to see where, what we want to do, I guess, funding-wise, because I've already directed, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, like 50 from the Chalk Town Beach Park over to help with this facility. But after me and Brad walked around over there, it might take a couple of dollars more than that. If, there's some appendages that were put on over the years that may need to be dissected off of there, there's some electrical issues, there's, there's just all kinds of kind of issues over there. My main thing, and I would like to keep the main building that's been there forever. But I would, I guess I'm looking for direction and maybe funding opportunities to help this place out, give it a little bit of a facelift. I'm not sure what that cost is going to be. I think Mr. Brad's going to put something together, maybe, and see what sticks on the wall when you throw it on there. But I guess, I guess I need to know what I need to tell Brad to do. I mean, do we want to go ahead and start demoing some of this stuff that's obviously I mean, I'm asking for the board's advice.
How many facilities do you have?
Well, I got a restroom facility at Chalk Town Beach Park. Grady Brown, well, it's not built yet, but there's some poles there for a restroom. Community Center.
You do, is the community center close to this?
Oh, no. It's up there by my office.
Okay.
This is right down further, this is the old fire station where they just moved out of here. So...
You got Portland, too, don't forget it.
Oh, yeah, but we already got money set aside for Portland to do some stuff at the Portland Community Center. But is that county-owned or is that community-owned? And we, because it's a voting precinct, we help out.
Portland's, yeah, Portland's county-owned.
Is it county-owned? Okay. So I don't know, I want to give Brad the pencil and paper to see what, what kind of magic he can work, so...
Looks pretty bad.
It's in full shape.
I mean, can you just demo it?
Well, I mean, for the historic aspect, I'd love to keep the old block building, but all those, I'm sure, I'm sure they were permitted, appendages that were put on there probably need to go, along with all the inadequate wiring that's all over the place. You know, I think they chopped it up in there for bedrooms and they needed the bedrooms in there for the...
Firemen.
Firemen. They're just, I mean, I don't even know, I think me and Brad even talked at the place where the fire engines were, I don't even know if that's safe enough to even do anything with, so maybe an open pavilion there and, as you can see, all the insulation, there's a, there's a roll-up door where we just went ahead and kept the roll-up door and just built a block wall, so...
That's the old fire bay.
Yeah, so, I think it's going to need a lot of work. I think it's going to need more than the 50 grand that I moved over from a mile down the road. Is there any suggestions? I mean, I know, I know Chairman Johns just said demo.
Use your 50 grand and demo as much as you can. That would be my suggestion. I mean, it's a dump.
The, the old block part of that's probably been there 60, 70, I mean, it's, and I can see the value in keeping that.
Well, that right there, I wanted to do like your Allegiance Park with some swings right there overlooking the bay, but...
You know, that's not a bad idea, to just put a nice playground area there.
Well, I don't, I think somebody was telling me Chance or somebody, FDOT didn't want more attention brought to the area, like you're going to put like a playground and all that in there because of the, Chance probably have a better...
Access to the water.
Well, and the road traffic.
Traffic there on 20 in congestion only two...
Because there's not a whole lot of parking there, we could probably...
Picnic tables?
Yeah. And those swings, I think, were fine, but I don't think we can put a playground there.
Could you put some picnic tables and a swing set there?
The bays he's talking about tearing down and using as an open pavilion, you could put picnic tables under it. And there is bathrooms there, so there's a plus.
Can you do all that for 50,000?
He can do miracles.
Why don't we see what you can do for 50,000 and then come back and ask about, about anything else?
If you want to do that, we'll do it. Is that good?
Yeah, just check it out and see what you can come up with. It's kind of reasonable.
I would suggest we need to remove all that unsafe wiring. I mean, they could go in there and rip all that out of there and, so the building doesn't burn down. And...
Sell some of those doors for salvage.
I, you know, let's get it, I would recommend we get it to a place where it's safe and then think about what, what we want to demo and what we want to keep and you tell us.
Okay.
But I do think you need to get all that...
Safety things.
Yeah. That unusual engineering out of there.
It's called redneck ingenuity.
I wasn't wanting, I didn't want to make that redneck mad, although I probably am.
So, I mean, is that, is that clear? I don't need a motion, right?
You don't need a motion. Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad. I'll put you on the spot another time.
Anything else?
No, that's it?
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Drake, did you have anything you want to say? No? Commissioner Gladwell, you had?
I did, but I did have one more thing, just to remind the board not to do anything today, but next year is the 250th birthday of our country and so I think we should start thinking about what, if anything, we want to do next July 4th, so...
Absolutely.
Just remind everybody to start thinking about it, maybe the public could come up with some ideas.
Yeah, if y'all want to have a committee or something and come up with some great ideas and do something really extravagant. Barbara, you'd be good at starting that. Barbara, you'd be good at starting that.
I was, I was a teenager when the bicentennial occurred a long time ago and that was pretty cool, so we need to...
Did you guys have any parades then or not?
Yeah, we had, and we had celebrations at all the county, like all the county community centers. It was pretty cool, so we need to start thinking.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'm sure there'd be some great ideas, so anything that you all come up with, any ideas, please let us know.
Send them to Commissioner Gladwell.
Or Ron Kelly.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson is not here, as you know, and so I have a few things on the list here, and one of them is, Tony, would you like to come up here for a moment while I speak about this? This is discussion and requesting direction. We put a halt on code compliance authority over Highway 98 at one point in time, I believe you said that was like March of last year?
November of '24.
November of '24, okay. So it's been almost a year and, and personally, I feel like we need to start doing our job and we need to put it back in motion and don't really know why we've held on to it so long, but can you speak to that as well?
Yeah, if the board, if the board wishes at this point in time to reinstate the scenic corridor enforcement, for code enforcement on the 98 corridor, we can certainly do so. Then the next step, of course, is the update of those ordinances. Candidly, I think some of that may have gotten shuffled in the transition of our planning department, but I've talked to Commissioner Johns about it. I'm going to get with code, we're going to look at some updates there on what we can do to bring that back and certainly look at taking some things before Design Review Board for 98 to address those. So it's just up to the board. I do think, given where we were, there was a little bit more nuance needed on the 30A side, so I would not recommend calling that one back just yet, even though we are done with all the litigation there. I still think it's prudent to, there was just, in the two versions I've worked up, the 30A one is a little more complicated than the 98 and I think if you open that up, you're going to put code in a worse position. 98, a little more straightforward, if that's what you want.
Yeah, that's kind of the DRB on 38, scenic 98 and 38 is my next, my next item. So on this particular one, when can we expect to have something come back on 98?
I think we can, I think we can aim for, if the board wants to look at it in its first, if you'll give us 30 days, I think if you're willing to look at it at the North End Meeting in October with an adoption aim at the end of October, we can bring something back that shows you what we've looked at there.
Okay.
That was a much, I'll just be clear, that was a much simpler process, given the two things we were trying to reconcile.
Okay, that would be great, if we can have something come back by the end of next month and then that way we can get back to where we're supposed to be and get things moving again. So, we don't want it to end up looking like Coney Island.
There you go.
So, thank you very much. You're okay with that?
We doing a motion or how do we need to...
Well, if you wanted to start reinforcing right now, before we get the ordinance, if you wanted to start enforcing what we've got, we do need a motion to lift the abatement on the 98 or we can wait till you come back. It's up to this board.
I think we need to wait till we got something in paper.
What sort of things are we talking about changing? What is the reason why we couldn't go ahead and lift the abatement now?
There's no reason why you can if you don't want to, that's just a policy call. What I would say is, we're going to try to give code a little better guidance of applying some of the scenic corridor standards that, without going through it in detail and getting all into the public hearing, without it being in front of you, because I think it's going to be, it's going to be easier if I show it to you in writing, but the short answer is, we have elements of the 98 guidelines that I won't say weren't enforced. That's probably not the right call, but there have been various interpretations of how to apply those guidelines over 30-plus years now, going back into the 9, what was the original date on that, Tony? Was it mid, was it early 2000s?
Probably, yeah.
38 was a little older?
Yeah.
One's a little older than the other. I always invert them in my mind. So the problem is, take a painting on the side of a building, which, one of the common discussions. At various times, if it wasn't facing Highway 98, meaning oriented north or south, it was not treated as enforced. Other times, it was based solely on the footage off the road, so people could have things that were very visible that were 410 feet back versus somebody right on the road that you could only see it from one direction or angle was subject to enforcement. And what it really has done is just created a little bit of disparity. In some cases, a lot of disparity between what's on the ground, so people come forward and say, "Well, this person has it, this person has it, why don't I?" And we go back and look and all of them have been done since the code was enacted. and all of them have been done since the code was enacted. So, it's something that we're trying to clean up to give code a little more consistency in how Tony's guys can respond to complaints and address things that are readily available. So, it is up to you. If you lift it now, everything that would be in violation today, based on how they would interpret it, is going to be addressed. I'm not going to tell you those same things aren't going to be in violation when we bring this back. They probably will be. It's just going to give these guys a little more guidance and a little more teeth to what they have to do.
30 days isn't going to make that much difference.
What do you, what do you think?
I mean, I think if we can get it back in 30 days, we, I mean, we've waited this long. I don't think 30 days is going to hurt.
Okay, okay.
I'll come down and get with you in planning.
We don't need a motion for that.
We do not. I'll come and get with you in planning.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, the next one is, Stephen, if you don't mind coming up, please, this is kind of a little bit along the same lines, except for, I believe it was at least two years ago, that we included in some fashion in the land development code that we were going to have standards for scenic 98 and 30A, and that hasn't really moved forward at all. And what I've been hoping for, for quite some time, is, is the design review board either to enhance the one we have and give them an opportunity to be able to change out, you know, people if somebody can't make it at a certain time, because this is going to add a lot more to that meeting. And right now, I think there's one a month, is that correct? One design review board a month?
That's correct.
If, if they get a quorum.
That's right.
And so, we're really hoping to have some people willing to step up and be on this board, the design review board. There are certain requirements and certain seats for that board. I believe we just had someone resign that was a real estate agent, so we need a real estate agent on the current board, but we need to enhance, either enhance it or have two boards, whatever you all decide that is necessary. But the point is, is that we need to make sure we have standards on 30A and on scenic 98, because there are some areas that are really lacking in, in, in standards along both of those routes.
So, we do have standards, but in terms of the design review board review and approval or recommendation, we do not have them currently, as you were, on 30A and scenic golf. We did, as it relates to the, your initial sort of comment, the two years back, so we did put those place, kind of placeholders for 30A, scenic golf, and then also for the 331 Economic Development Corridor. So, we have the ability to provide standards and the DRB review in that respect. DRB is currently working on the 98 standards. I think we would have to get with legal in terms of how to fashion that DRB review for those other corridors and then move forward. Specifically, the 30A corridor will take a robust study to develop those standards to carry forward.
Right, I understand that, and I understand that you've got a full plate too right now.
Yes, ma'am.
So, can you just add this to your full plate?
It is added, yes.
Okay, okay. And, you know, I don't expect it back in 30 days, I really don't, but, you know, if we can have it back within the next 90 days, would be great.
We'll certainly move that direction. I do have some concerns about SB 180, but again, I'll get with legal and we'll work through those issues.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, and the last thing I wanted to talk about is the hiring process for the people that work directly under the board, which would be our CFO, our county attorney, our county administrator, and potentially if we have a TDC executive director, that individual. I'd like to see in writing the standards or the process for, come on up, Terry, the process that we as a county have, so that we know for sure, if somebody puts in an application for a position, that the board gets that application, if, if that person qualifies for the job. Can you tell me how the process is right now and what we can do to improve it?
Yes, absolutely, and I agree with you. There were some inconsistencies prior to our current county administrator. I would gather the information. I would meet with the county administrator biweekly, give him an idea of what positions are open, especially the higher level ones. And at that time, our primary focus was on the deputy county administrator and filling the planning director. There were three that applied for the position of county attorney. That was not the priority at the time. We were just trying to get these filled. So, I'm totally in complete agreement. I would like to come up with basically a policy that as they come in, I, and I don't know whether I would submit them to the chair or submit them to each member. I'd like some feedback on that. And then we'd come up with just a policy as they come in. I would submit them to the board and then we'd review them. I'd basically identify with the minimum qualifications, make sure all those specifications were met. I'd let you know one way or the other. If they do meet the specs, if they don't meet the specs, provide that to you and then get feedback to move forward on it.
I personally think we, every board member should get the application pretty much immediately as they, as they're coming in, or if you want to make sure that you, you check them to make sure they meet the basic requirements before you send them over to us. That's something that the board could decide if they, how they want it done, but we need to have something in writing. It doesn't need to be a long, lengthy, you know, ordinance or, or policy, but it needs to be something in writing so that everybody knows what the process is.
Yeah, and I can get something like that, again, put together, again, I'll review through legal. I'll present it to you guys, get some feedback from you, but I agree completely. And what I'd like to do is come up with something like, we identify the job description, minimal qualifications. As they come in, I still grade them out, so you have some information, you know, do they have experience? Do they have the qualifications? Do they have certifications, licensing, whatever it may be? That would all be provided to you along with the application for your review.
Okay, and again, that would be just for those positions that fall directly under the board. Right, okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I agree with what you just said. I think we ought to all get every application, no matter if they're qualified or not qualified, but you put in, if they were qualified for this or meet minimum this, but at least let us see them as well, because I think the problem is, we have a transparency problem or, or, you know, a file 13 problem where these applications go off into never, never land and then we never get to see them. I agree with everything that you just said with giving everybody the application along with a sheet, after you vetted them, you can still send your sheet with them and you can put your two cents on it, one way or the other, but we still get the application in front of us.
Yeah, I think that's ideal.
Any, any other comments? No? Commissioner Drake? No? Okay, do we need a motion to have him come back and write that?
Direction's fine, as long as Mr. Frank's been clear with it.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thanks, ma'am.
And you can do that within, what, 30 days?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I had. Okay, so, public, before public, oh, after, okay. Public comments? Jeff in the back first and then Mr. Tricker. Sorry, he had his hand up first.
Jeff Goldberg, EM Director. I didn't feel the need to put this on the agenda because I was just going to make an announcement. Just a reminder, we have our Build a Bucket event on Saturday from 9 to 11. We've got, as of this morning, 22 people signed up for a Stop to Bleed class. We have approximately 55 vendors and partner agencies that are going to be out there with either vehicles or just booths and things like that. Chris Smith is still going to go ahead and emcee the event and there's going to be music and all kinds of stuff going on. So, we're limiting it to 500 buckets, so one bucket per family. So, we're probably expecting, at least we're hoping to expect about 1,500 to 2,000 people to come by through this, so we're making a pretty big deal of it. Doug Hirsch, who's the logistics coordinator, and Tom Dobbs, who's our Defense Department's Gilbridge intern, they've been spearheading this. They've been doing a phenomenal job. And I told Doug, no matter how successful it is this year, you know next year you got to step it up, right?
Well, it's the anniversary, too.
That's right. So, it's, so it's all good. So, I just kind of wanted to push that out there.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm looking forward to that. So, be sure to be one of the first 500 so you get a bucket.
Right, thank you.
Filled with goodies for the storm that we hope we don't have. Mr. Tricker?
I was going to say, I didn't know we was having those storms. That's not a problem. Thank you. Good to see everybody. Good to be back.
Welcome back. You need to tell her your name.
Let me see, I remember. It's Fred Tricker, T-R-I-C-K-E-R, and I wanted to talk about the, the meeting I went to yesterday, and I was a participant actually in the special magistrate hearing. And I wanted to give you some feedback about what I took out of that meeting in terms of the process. I don't want to talk about the actual subject of the meeting, just the process and how I think it went. So, first of all, we have a two-step process now for QJ hearings, quasi-judicial, where the first step involves calling expert witnesses. And both sides of the argument can call witnesses, and in this case, both sides are all on the same side. That was a problem, is that the developer gets to call his expert witnesses. And by the way, there's no definition for what an expert is, that I'm aware of. It's not in the code anywhere. I don't know what that definition is. So, evidently, the developer can call up anybody he wants to bring up, call him an expert, he's qualified, he gets as many minutes as he needs, as wants, to make his presentation. So, in one case, I know Gary Shipman called one of his employees as an expert witness, and I don't understand that. So, actually, when you look at it, expert witnesses may have expertise, but they're not necessarily objective. So, if they're not objective, you know, why is their testimony any more important than a lay witness? So, I'll give you an example that actually came up at the meeting yesterday on the compatibility analysis. And what I said is, well, in my experience, I have never, ever seen a compatibility analysis paid for by a developer that said that it wasn't compatible. So, how, how is that competent?
Mr. Tatum, hold on a minute, Madam Chair.
Yes.
To be clear, we're not going to have a conversation today about the actual contents of the hearing.
No, he said he wasn't talking.
And I think we're on that line, but to be clear, Mr. Tatum and Mr. Tricker, that if either one of you go into that, I'm going to ask the Madam Chair to tell them they need to sit down and forth for the rest of the time, because it will definitively be violating quasi-judicial proceeding. It is under review by the magistrate. So, right now, Mr. Tricker, I don't think you're across the line. I would stop you if I felt you had gotten there, but what I would say is, commenting on you've never seen a compatibility analysis that doesn't favor the person who paid for it, fair comment. I can tell you I have, but you don't see them very often, and rarely do those, are those the ones that get introduced in evidence. However, let's don't talk about what was actually in that compatibility analysis. Is that fair, Mr. Tatum? Okay.
I did not intend to talk about what was in it. However, in terms of process, there was an opposing analysis done by a certified planner that was not, it was entered into the record, it was entered into the record as a letter from a resident, Margaret Landry. It was not included in the expert witnesses for the county. He was not accounted, Louis Serna was going to appear as a expert witness over Zoom, and in my opinion, and the county knew about it in advance, he should have been qualified, pre-qualified as an expert witness for the county, and he wasn't. So, you know, it's a question of fairness. It felt like the whole process, from the expert witness point of view, was top-loaded towards the developer. And the other side, the citizens, weren't getting much of a fair shake at all. On the other side, and I don't know why, now, public comment is not sworn comment. People get three minutes, three minutes only, and I don't know what the status is of those comments. I would assume that that is not qualified as competent substantial evidence, which to me is a travesty, because there's a lot of issues where laypeople that don't have necessarily educational qualifications have expertise, and in the case of, I won't talk about the one we did last night, but in a lot of cases, people, based on where they live, have witnessed things and they understand the neighborhood. They can talk about that. And to me, that's competent evidence. So, you know, this whole idea of you got experts who get 100% weight, residents get 0% weight, I just don't think it's fair.
I wouldn't say that is the nature of the law, nor would I say that lay opinion testimony is not considered. There are standards under which lay opinion testimony can or can't be considered. I don't think anybody wants me to stand up here and read case law, you know, letter and verse to you. What I would say is that competent substantial evidence is a legal standard, and the ALJ will apply that, just as this board has to. Certainly, public comment was allowed, to the extent that lay testimony can be considered or could be used as competent substantial evidence. I am confident that Judge Van Wick, who is an administrative law judge sworn in the state of Florida, is aware of those legal standards and is able to properly apply those legal standards. Of course, if we find there's not, that's, those will be issues we take up.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you.
That's good to know, but if that's the case, why are, why are public comment witnesses not sworn in?
Because you weren't called as a witness by either party.
Okay, so does their, so their testimony counts the same as an expert witnesses in terms of whether it's valid or not?
Well, Mr. Tricker, it's not a matter of validity. It's very simple. It's what weight is any bit of testimony given. In every hearing, weight is given. A judge can hear 20 witnesses from one side and one witness from another and determine that the 20 witnesses on one side had no credibility or offered no relevant testimony. And the one witness on the other side may be a paid hired gun, may be an expert, may not be. It may just be the random neighbor down the street. You, I've seen cases where judges have completely disregarded expert testimony from surveyors in favor of somebody across the street who says, hey, I live there, I'm looking at you, I'm telling you what I've seen, and the judge said, look, I find out a lot more competent than the guy who just looked at three surveys and never was on site. I'm not going to weigh in on what happened yesterday. We are talking in the abstract, unfortunately. If I were to weigh in and directly address your comments about yesterday, I think we're getting out of bounds of what we can talk about. But what I will say is this, every hearing is going to be on its own merits, as it has to be, and it is entirely possible that in some cases, you're going to see the nature of testimony presented be citizens called as an affected party, as a third party, so to speak, in there. You may well see that be given much greater weight and be the deciding factor, more so than an expert witness. Technically, when you talk about expert witnesses, and the only other comment I want to make to the board is, the decision to accord someone expert status, if you were in court right now, judges in front of juries do not go through the process where somebody says, Judge, I'd like him declared an expert witness. They don't even do that now. They've eliminated that process in most proceedings to avoid the imprimatur that this person's testimony is worth more than someone else. The nature of expert testimony goes to skilled professional matters that would require an expert. You can't call a random person who has no medical training to come discuss with, well, why did this person die? Well, it looked like they died. I don't know, they stopped breathing. That's not medical testimony. You can call a doctor who performed an autopsy. That person has to have the necessary training and credentials. So, is one an expert? Yes. Is the other not? True. It doesn't mean that the person who said, yeah, the reason the person actually died was because I saw John Doe over here stab that person. Well, that testimony is going to be a lot more direct as to what the cause of death was than the medical finding of the cause of death. So, it, every case is different. So, I just, I don't know that in the abstract here, we consider and say, well, are we going to give 100% testimony to experts or not? No, but if you're asking somebody to get up and talk about traffic patterns, a traffic engineer may carry more weight than someone who's never been on that road. Somebody who says, I've driven that road my entire life and I can tell you, here's how many accidents we have, my house is right there, I get them on my ring doorbell every day, may have a whole lot more weight than the traffic engineer who says, I just looked at a report and I've never been in the community. I've seen it both ways. So, I just, it's going to be case by case, Mr. Tricker.
Yeah, so just, just one more comment. Is it, so, if that's the case, and I appreciate that, that the public comment is going to be considered, I don't think the public knows that. And I think the public came out of that meeting last night thinking that they were not respected. Their, their voices didn't count. I think you need to tell them.
Go back and look at that.
You need to tell them that their voices do count.
We will gladly look at that.
Right.
And the determination of what the ruling's going to be.
Well, that's going to be up to the judge, and we're not going to tell the judge how to do her job. I want to be clear about that. And if the judge determined that certain citizen's comments were not evidence to which she gave due weight or didn't feel she needed to, for whatever reason, that's the role of the judge. That would be no different than this board sitting here and listening to 40 people and saying, I can't give that weight or you said you don't like it, so.
That's sufficient reason not to have a special magistrate.
Well, the board considers it the same.
Because the people need to feel like they're connected to their government. And what we've done is we've got one step of removal.
Mr. Tricker, you do realize the public does not have the ability to stand there and tell the board, we don't like something, and not provide competent substantial evidence and expect this board to deny, right?
I understand that.
So, the board would do the same right here, is all I'm saying. It doesn't matter whether you're in front of a magistrate or this board, the same standard applies.
I've heard a lot of evidence at the planning commission from laypeople that was not only competent, it was substantial. A lot of it.
And you and I have sat in those meetings together, and Mr. Tricker, you've asked me that question before. Can I consider them? What my answer's always been, you decide what weight to give it, sitting in that role, and you vote accordingly.
Yeah. Yeah, but there was not a QJ, there was not a special magistrate involved. And not only that, but the procedures for a special magistrate also apply to the other QJ hearings. It's not just the BCC.
Mr. Trickler, we're, we've gone way over.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. But we, we know that this is a new process, we're all looking at it, we, we have opportunities to tweak or change, whatever, and, and we'll do what's necessary. But we haven't even had an opportunity yet. So give it, give us a chance to see, you know, what happens, okay?
Just my feedback from one meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you for what it's worth.
Thank you for going, and, and thank you for sharing your information.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Mr. Rourke. I'm sorry, Lee, I didn't see your hand until later, so I'll get you next.
Todd LaRocque. I have three, three items. The first one is just basically the status. Chair, you, you brought up McMansions. I just want to understand what the status is of the McMansions on 38 specifically and on the beach. There was some, some discussion around how to better control that and keep it, I mean, they're just coming up out of the woodwork. I'm being surrounded in Cassine Village, in my own community, of McMansions that are much, much, much taller than obviously my little bungalow. But is there, I thought we were doing something to...
We are, we are doing something.
Unfortunately, Mr. Kellnberger's not here.
Right, right. And, and he'd have a lot more to say. You know, there, years ago, it was stated that it would be 50 feet.
The clock is still running. Thank you.
That's right. Years ago, we said that it was going to be 50 feet. Somehow, that 50 feet came with a
Formule.
Formula with it, that, that made it
65.
65, 67 and a half in one case. The land development code, we are going to be rewriting that and tweaking that and fixing that. And some of the neighborhood plans have already changed theirs to less than that. And so, yes, I, I don't like them, I don't think that anybody likes them, you know, and a lot of them are empty. So hopefully, we can get that changed before long.
So, I purchased property immediately, well, not immediately, but shortly after Hurricane Michael on Mexico Beach, and we bought on the beach. I eventually sold that because I was three feet above elevation, and every time a storm with my OCD and stuff, it just, I couldn't deal with it, obviously. Mexico Beach has some strong building codes now, where houses can only be 40 feet, and it's, it's a measurement from the sand and up. And I would like you guys to investigate what Mexico Beach is doing to control the height of those buildings or homes
Absolutely.
To 40 feet, and it's, and it's exact measurement, there's no calculation.
Right.
The, the second point I have really quick is, the beach, now that we're in a slow season, I, I would like to see if there was some type of partnership, someone would stand up from the board or even from the community and bring the homeowners and the non-beachfront homeowners together, locals together, because right now, we have a civil war. I live it every single day. I don't go to the beach because I can't, because I end up involved in the middle of battles. We, we still have a guy walking around with a drill, and I commend the sheriff's deputies that are out there and the co-compliance officers who are dealing with this guy, that we got intimidation with a drill that's two and a half feet long. It's all kinds of things. And I, I just think it's time that we come together as a community, and we got to bring, regardless of the litigation, we don't have to get into that, but we got to figure out how to coexist. And we do not coexist. I, I live it every single day, and I don't go to the beach because I don't want to end up in jail or six feet under the sand. It's just not, it's not a healthy environment on, at the beach, period. And I have friends that I love and adore that are homeowners, and I understand the private property rights, but it's just, we just need somebody to stand up. I know Dan's been there, and Mr. Gladwell's been there.
I've been there, I just don't let everybody know.
We need somebody to stand up and, and take charge. And very quickly, the last thing is drug houses. There's a lot of noise on social media.
What kind of houses?
Drug houses. There's a lot of noise and concern, and, and I would actually like to lean on Mr. Gladwell's because of his experience as a law enforcement officer. Is there a way that, that the board and the county can create a workshop with the sheriff? Because, and figure out how to stop these drug houses? And, and we're, we're getting pictures across social media of people being put out in body bags, but then people are saying there's been no arrest. So can we just figure out, because it's, it's the safety of your community that you're in charge of. And can we bring the sheriffs in and the county in to have some type of workshop to discuss what we're doing to protect the citizens? We've seen so many drug arrests lately, we have drugs washed up on the beach, what happens to those? I mean, they wash up and we don't get any updates. But there's so much mention about drug houses, and so many people are afraid to stick their name out there and ask the question. I'm not afraid, obviously. So I, I don't know, Mr. Gladwell, if there's a possibility of having some type of community workshop, joint community workshop with the county and the sheriff, just to talk about it and what's going on so that we can...
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. We can look into that and see. I did go to the overdose awareness event last Sunday, I believe it was, in apparently Uniac by the Lake. It was a huge eye-opener. I mean, it was, it was absolutely amazing. There's so many resources for people that need them. And I know that's a little bit off-topic of what you're talking about, but it, it kind of is on topic too. It was extremely interesting, and be happy to share with you what I've learned there. And, you know, we're, we can, you know, talk to the sheriff's office and find out and see what we can find out.
No, just put the two together.
Because you're right, we have had drugs come in, they, when they come in, we don't necessarily find out what the ultimate outcome was, like, did they ever find out where they came from, or they dropped from a boat, or they dropped from an airplane, you know, whatever, you know? So I don't, I don't know, that's, that's, that's the sheriff's office's...
There's just, there's just a lot of noise, and I get a lot of private messages because the people are afraid. So, and I just didn't know if Mr. Gladwell had any experience with that, if we could just, can I, transparency?
We can have a workshop if the sheriff wants to participate. But on individual cases, people have, you know, you've got to have probable cause, and I mean, there's a lot of different things go into enforcement, and, you know, I can say it's a drug house, but you've got to be able to prove it.
Well, exactly.
A whole different standard.
Yeah, exactly. I, I agree with you 100%, but what, is there a, is there a plan, is there a strategic plan in place to, to how we address these? Just, it's the transparency thing, and, and like I said before, when there's lack of communication, people will make it up. And it, there seems to be a big problem. You know, where there's smoke, there's fire, and we obviously have some issues with some, some vagrants that are being supposedly moved around at night. You know, I don't know, there's a lot of conspiracy theorists out there, and I'm sure Mr. Gladwell's active on social media, and Mr. Trickler is as well, that they see these conspiracy theorists. We just need the transparency, and, and it's, it's scary. I mean, the times we're going through, I mean, I lived in Charlotte, so you know, it's known the young lady that was...
Yes.
So there's a lot of issues with this law enforcement and being released back into the community.
Lot of mental health issues, too.
Yeah, we, that's another topic I'll bring up another day because I have some ideas about that. But anyway, I appreciate you allowing me to go over, and thank you, Mr. Gladwell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. It's Lee Moore, M-O-O-R-E. And I'm speaking representing scenic Walton today. We just want to thank you for pushing forward on looking at reinstating code enforcement along US 98, and also expanding the purview potentially of the design review board to these other really important corridors. And just real briefly, I just wanted to say, I was on the design review board for a long time, and that, that is kind of an interesting board. You mentioned that it does require specific qualifications for each seat. And I just, this is my experience when I was on it, that we had a lot of really good outcomes on that board. And I don't know if you all get a lot of complaints about the design review board, they never made their way back to us. But the, the board, because of that expertise and, and because of the collaborative nature of it, really worked with applicants, and many times, I'm not saying we never made anybody mad, and I can't speak to what's happening today, I'm talking about my experience on the board. But most of the time, it felt like everybody left happy with the outcome. And we even had, I mean, I'll, I think I can say the name, this is all public record, but Dollar General, we worked really hard on one of their locations in South Walton. And they actually, at the end of it, came back to us and told us that they appreciated our input, and they were considering making changes to their design guidelines across the board, based on some of the things that were, that came out of that time with us as a design review board. So I know a lot of people are so negative about, you know, additional scrutiny and additional code, you know, and, and that kind of thing, but I just think that board has great outcomes, both for the community and the development community. And so I really think it's a great thing to look at this. I hope Senate Bill 180 does not get in the way of that right now. And of course, code enforcement, I'm on a soapbox today, so give me a little bit of grace. But I will tell you that, you know, we share the same beautiful beaches and water with a lot of other places. And, but there's something about Walton County that's different. And it's the height restriction, it's the amount of protected land we have, all of those things are critically important. But I really do believe it's also the land development code and certainly the scenic corridor guidelines. And I've heard people on social media say, 98's anything but scenic. Well, 98 is not a beach highway, it is a commercial corridor. And I don't know if people have paid a lot of attention to a lot of commercial corridors around the country, but 98, while not perfect, ain't bad. Okay? And it's only because of that code. So it's critically important, and we just appreciate your support of it and your willingness to go back and start looking at that again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just, come on up, Barbara, come on up. I'd just like to say, I was on that design review board too, and I was on when Lee was on. And it really is a very interesting board, and, and it does a lot of really good things. They help with signage, they help with lighting, they help with plants, they help with all sorts of things. So it's a really interesting board, which, again, if you know anybody out there that is interested in being on a board, we do need some people on that board, so please reach out. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Barbara Morano.
Before Ms. Morano starts, just to comment on Ms. Moore. It is interesting, I saw a video from another county last night where they were holding up Walton County as the shining example of how things should be.
Really?
Santa Rosa County.
Wow.
So, you know, while, while we sometimes think things are, thinks the sky is falling, other counties look at us and say, whoa, they got it going on.
That's good to know.
I agree, that's why I came out. I've worked, I, I've observed Lee when she was on the design review board, and I attended quite a few meetings because I was concerned about some of the projects coming along. I was just amazed, the professionalism and how hard they work. And as Lee said, if you doubt anything about 98, all you have to do is drive Ocaloosa, go through Walton, and then hit Panama City? Oh, my goodness. You know that we are on the right track. And like Lee said, it's not perfect, but definitely code compliance and support of the design review board is necessary. It is not a level of government that is negative, in my opinion. But I want to encourage planning, the planning attorney, our, our attorney, about SB 180 and the ordinance that was signed on June 23rd, I think it was, 2023. I don't think it falls under SB 180. And, and I encourage us to take a brave step and move forward with this ordinance that unfortunately was way behind times, and it is not Stephen Schoen's fault, we had another director at that time. But also, I'll add to that, is planning has always been, in my opinion, overloaded and overworked. And maybe Mac was never really honest with us or with you to say, I am overworked. You always heard, yes, I'll go back and do it, but it never got done. So, thank you, and let's move forward. I've got my folder, when I make folders, I'm really serious. So this is chapter six, and I've got it all. So thank you.
And you are correct, 180 does not reply, apply to anything that occurred in 2023.
It doesn't apply, is how would you say?
It does not.
Wonderful. Okay, so planning can go ahead and get moving. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Barbara, appreciate that. Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none? Okay. That's it for this, so, pardon me?
Yeah. Clerk Rebecca, brief break.
Okay. We are going to take a break before the next portion of our legislative items. before the next portion of our legislative items.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I feel really tall. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners.
Would you state your name, please?
My name is Ayana Reed.
Thank you.
Ayana Reed, R-E-E-D, Planning and Development Services. Okay, so Juan's Auto Repair SSA with rezoning. This is a request to approve by ordinance, project number FLU 25000026. This is a future land use with rezoning application submitted by Interlight Engineering Corp. on behalf of Juan Ramos Carlos Alvarez, requesting to change the current future land use from rural residential to commercial or lesser category, and to change the zoning district from rural village to general commercial or lesser district on 1.02 plus or minus acres. The property is in District 1, located on the east side of U.S. Highway 331 South, approximately 0.54 miles south of Ramsey Branch Road and is identified by the parcel number in your packet. And with that, may I enter the packet into the staff report? I mean, into the record?
So entered, yes. Thank you.
Okay, so a couple of things to keep in mind. Because this is a commercial development, they will be connected to water, public water and sewer with the city of Freeport. There are no significant impacts to any wetlands. There will be no adverse. Well, there may be adverse impacts, depending on the operations, because this would be the most intense use of the space. That was taken into account by our engineering and traffic impact analysis from staff. Per staff comment from flood plain management and updated environmental assessment would be required for the technical review stage at D.O. I will say that the applicant does intend to build a 3,900-square-foot automotive repair shop with approximately six service bays and an office storefront area that meets a growing local demand for accessible vehicle maintenance and repair service, per the applicant's compatibility analysis. Staff does find that this is compliant with the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan, excuse me, and it does align with the density and compatibility of the surrounding zoning. Let's see. And also, I want to note that the parcels to the north and east are predominantly vacant, also per the applicant's compatibility analysis. So with that, staff does recommend approval for adoption by ordinance. And I'll open this up to any questions you might have.
Okay. So you said to the north and to the east are vacant, so there's nothing there. What about the people to the south of them? Is there any issues that anyone has?
Let's see. Give me one moment.
I'm just curious if there's anybody that's, you know...
So to the south of the site is heavy industrial.
Okay.
So there's no residential to the south of that proposed site. So there's no issues there.
Okay.
We did receive one public comment in July as a letter of opposition. And that was specifically speaking to the commercial development and the impact on the scenic views along 331. But I do want to note that 331 is not a part of the scenic corridor. So just something to keep in mind as you read that public comment. And that's also within the exhibits and staff report.
Is there anything that we're going to do or require from them that would kind of at least have it look nice along 331? Or is it just going to be just a bunch of cars out there? Everybody can...
So all of that would be addressed at the development order stage. So when they come back, if you give them approval today for the rezone, when they submit their formal application for development order, that would be the opportunity for them to present to us in their submittal what their screening requirements or what they're proposing in terms of screening, making sure that they're meeting their density requirements that they proposed here, that they're meeting any type of design requirement, signage requirements, and things of that nature.
Okay.
So that will be the time that we would address those things.
Thank you. Any comments?
So you do have heavy industrial to the south.
Correct.
General commercial across the street. And what is the lot right next to it on the north? Is that...
Next to it on where?
Just to the north or just to the... Right above it, right above your...
To the north, that's rural village.
And right under heavy industrial, that big lot, what is that zoned?
Here's the page that says...
Yeah, if you could roll the page up a little bit more. Where you see the... I'm looking online. It's a color...
Oh. On the color maps?
Yeah, the color maps.
So heavy industrial and then south of heavy industrial?
Yes.
General commercial.
Okay, okay. All right, all right. Thank you.
And the applicant also speaks to that in their compatibility analysis in terms of what is existing on all sides of the proposed site. And staff did not see any possible conflict in terms of how this proposed development would align with the commercial development that's proposed for the 331 corridor. So that's something that we made note of in our review.
Okay. Any other questions? Any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any questions from the audience? Yes, sir. Yes, please.
Yeah, my name is Chris Zimmer. I'm a resident nearby. I was the person who commented back in July. I live on Sweetwater Lane, so that is due west of the proposed development. And I think I can answer the one question, which is what's immediately to the north? There is a residence bordering this proposed development site. And then the next, at least one lot, maybe two lots up, there is that seadoo company that sells skadu boats, all that stuff. And then due west of that, again, across the highway where I live on Sweetwater Lane, that is, used to be rural residential. And ARV Park was developed in there last year. And prior to that development, the rural residential zoning was changed along that street. And there were a lot of upset people on my street as a result of that change.
There's quite a few houses in your neighborhood, right?
Yeah, there's 11 homes that are in there. So anyway, but my concern that I had expressed back in July in writing related to the fact that I'd seen changes made on my road that weren't supported by the residents in that area and that I had concerns about the visual quality, you know, diminishing along 331. So I just wanted to let the board know about that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You may want to show up at the meetings when they get to that portion and make sure that they screen it properly and things like that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes. Hello, David.
Hello. And good afternoon. I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering. And I'd like to just add just a little bit as well. I won't repeat everything that staff said, but this is the property here. And for reference, it's across from Sweetwater Lane. And the gentleman that just spoke, it's Distinctive Cycles is the location of the commercial facility. So what I'd like to do is point to the map from the questions you asked.
Yes.
Is we're here. So immediately south is Heavy Industrial, which I spoke to Ms. Paris. To the north, there is a single-family home of my client, as well as I did call the owner. She did speak to him as well. There were no concerns. And then I want to point out in the rural village here that that's where Distinctive Cycles is. It's located in the rural village zoning category. So also, you can see throughout the corridor, it's commercial. So also, you can see throughout the corridor, it's commercial, commercial, just because US 331 is a major arterial. It's not suitable for residential development. It's consistent with the development trend. And, you know, I just wanted to clarify. I know a couple of questions came up, and we will follow all the rules of the Land Development Code for the development order when we get to that stage. But, and you guys know me, I'm big on what will it look like?
Right.
So my client's already hired an architect. May I show you what it will look like?
I would like to, I would like to ask, since you told me that there's a residence right to the north of that.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to put something, I know you said that she doesn't care, but would you be willing to put something up, a little bit of screening down the side so she doesn't, because she may not, she may move sometime, or somebody else may move in? Would you consider, or do you have to put any kind of screening along that side?
We have buffering requirements as part of the Land Development Code. And we do have the option for screen fencing, but we do have to address that. We can't just clear up to the property line.
All right. Thank you.
And if I may, I'd always tell you, Ms. Johns, if I'm, y'all want to see what it's going to look like. I know I'm not here to talk about that, but...
No, that's fine. I appreciate it.
Jeff Margaritten.
Oh, okay. Very nice. So the cars are going to be in the back?
Excuse me?
Wonderful.
Oh, perfect.
Wonderful. That looks nice. Has he seen that?
No. I'm more than happy to show it to him after this meeting.
Yeah, afterwards, why don't you look at it? It looks pretty nice. Okay. Thank you, David.
Thank you for letting me show that.
Absolutely. I appreciate it. It's always easier to see something, you know, than try to figure out what it's looking like, because, you know...
I know, and I would want the same thing. So thank you for letting me show that.
Appreciate it. So anyone else want to speak to this? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So item number four is under the quasi-judicial item heading?
As we will not be actually hearing any testimony based on the board's prior direction, I'm going to omit swearing anyone in, because this is more for board discussion. The posture of this is very simple. This project came in midstream of our ordinance change. Therefore, as is the case with any of these changes, it's a circumstance where you are not permitted to change the process on people midstream. So technically, this would have come to you rather than go to the magistrate. However, the applicant did request the opportunity to go to the magistrate and avail themselves of using that process. And so the issue is before you. Unfortunately, the way this was postured came up very different than East Nursery, perhaps, if, perhaps just a difference in who is reviewing each project for planning. But the long story short is, this is the same posture that East Nursery has presented to you with a request from the applicant, that they would like to avail themselves of the magistrate process, but otherwise, based upon the date of adoption of our ordinance compared to their time for application, this would otherwise come to you. So it is up to the board if you wish to hear it in a quasi-judicial capacity and schedule that hearing. I want to be clear that the way we've set this up would be, all notices would remain in effect. No, no notices would be sent if you do hear this on the 23rd of September, or if it would be heard by the special magistrate at their next available hearing day. So it's to the board.
Okay. Madam Chair? Yes.
Mr. Atkinson, what have we done with the others? So we stay...
So East Nursery was sent to the magistrate. We allowed the public to offer comment before the BCC and transmit that to the magistrate. What I would say is, based on the magistrate's position to hear public comment at this last hearing, if, because we said we weren't going to do it, if you chose to send it to the magistrate today, I would simply send it with a request that the public be given a chance to comment, just like they were on East Nursery, so that the public does have that opportunity to comment at that hearing, although I doubt Judge Van Wick's going to change her process and disallow it. But that way, it's made clear the public will have an opportunity to be present and heard. But it is up to the board.
Being, well, in District 4, and I'm familiar with a lot of the questions and concerns that go along with this. And for that reason, I would like for us to be able to hear this one.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The only problem I have with that is we've already sent all the other ones that way. And I don't know, I don't think this is fair, I guess, to pick and choose.
There were only three that were in the hopper that we had the option of.
And this is one of the two.
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
This is one, two, right?
Yes. This is, this is the last one that was in the hopper, the very last one of the three.
Did we send the other two, though?
Well, one of them we did. I don't know about the other.
Sunliner was transmitted. It turned out that they actually came in. We originally thought they were subject to it. Turns out, they actually did come in in a position where they should have gone to the magistrate.
That's right.
So there were only two.
There's a pre-app, but the actual application came in after the ordinance adoption.
Well, aren't we already at the stage where we're going to watch a couple of these and then come back to the board and decide one way or the other if we were going to continue to send them to the magistrate or hear them here at the board?
This is the last one that we have an option to hear or not hear. This is the only one left that we have. All the rest of them go directly to the board unless we go, we change at that point. So this is the only one left that we have an opportunity to hear if, if we so choose.
But we could have the op, I don't know where they had in line. I mean, we just had East Nursery. What's the next one?
There is no other one. It's already, everything else has been sent. This would be the last one.
This would be the last one to go to make a decision on if we send it to the magistrate.
Right. Yeah, it's already been sent.
It's already been sent.
This one.
This was, this was the...
Brooke Davis, on behalf of the Planning Department, I, I think there...
Hold on, we got people in the audience. Brooke, hold on a minute. People need to either be at the podium to talk on this issue. The question before the board is whether or not you will hear it, or it will be sent to DOA. Yes, there was confusion about it being transmitted to DOA. DOA is not, ALJ is not hearing this until you make a decision. So the question then still comes down, do you wish to hear it or not? This will be, and I can go recouch what you said, Madam Chair, just to be clear, this is the last one where you have discretion on sending it to DOA. It's not discretion on whether you hear it. You would hear it by ordinance and timing. The applicant has made the request, so it is your discretion to send this on to DOA or to hear it yourself.
Mr. Atkinson, if I may, there, there may be a couple more that come through that would be subject to the opportunity for the BCC to still hear. There's nothing that I am aware of at this point that is anywhere in the process. I know there are some that we have sent out, some notices that, that things have not been done yet.
I would ask you and Mr. Shawn to review the email that was sent to me when I asked to identify every one that was an application received between the date that the board started this process and adopted the ordinance that indicated three and only three. So what I'm going to say is, for the record, that if there are applications received that were not disclosed in that email, that's a challenge. And I'm not referring to a pre-app. It needs to be an application.
I thought there were two categories there, though.
Why don't y'all talk about that and give us a written report, so we can be clear on that, please?
Yes.
Because I, my understanding, when we went back through, there were, there were eight in total, and there were some that have not moved forward. And so we're, we have sent them notices to let them know that they have 30 days to...
Well, under 1080, if they've not taken action, they're under the ordinance now.
Right.
So, yeah, they don't fall under the discretionary.
Right.
The new, not 180, there's a 1080.
Okay.
That requires us to do, have a very rigorous timeframe for response upon application, and hearing matters. So based on that going into effect, none of those apply. So this is it. Y'all, it's up to you, board.
This is, this is it. This is the last one, the only one. There's one that's gone before them, just one, correct? One has gone before the DOA.
The only one's been heard.
The only one that's been heard, so...
I'm sure Mr. Tatum has an opinion.
Well, I'm trying to decide if I need to say anything or not. Yeah, for the record, Stephen Tatum here on behalf of the HNS LLC, developers of the Echelon Project. If any project needs to go before the administrative law judge, I believe it's this one, the reason I'm saying that is because the densities and height of this project are already approved within the DRI itself. That's been vested for 30 years. That, the right to build this many units on this property and at this height has been vested for a very long time. So the only thing we're looking at right now is technical review. Does our site plan, does our stormwater plan, does our parking plan, do our setbacks meet the requirements of the Land Development Code? That's a technical review process. The, of course, TRC has already looked at it and passed it on, saying that it does meet it. Planning Board denied it, as we know, and Planning Board's decision was based on traffic and, and that's...
But that is an issue.
But it's already, those trips are already vested. The trips for those units are already vested and in your CMS.
Hold on.
Yeah, no, we shouldn't be talking about this.
Please do not, please do not talk.
Yeah, Ms. Tatum, you...
You're right. We shouldn't be talking about this. But, so I will drop that part, but where I'm going with is, we're looking at technical review. The administrative law judge is an individual who is accustomed to looking at regulations, looking at applications, looking at reports, and making a decision based on those reports. That's what she does for a living. And in this particular case, she's going to be able to have 20 days from the date of the hearing until she has to issue an order to compare of all the evidence that's presented to her and compare it to the Land Development Code, look at staff's findings, and decide whether or not she agrees it complies or not. Then she'll transmit to you guys her, her findings, and then you can look at her findings and make a determination as to whether you agree or not. I think that's an ideal situation for this kind of project. She will have time. You, you guys are going to need to make a decision within a couple of hours, three hours of a presentation, depending on if I'm presenting or not. And this gives her, you know, a 20-days window to, to really finally look at the project. So that's why I would urge y'all to send this on to the ALJ. Let, let her take a shot at it. Let us present. And we do have opposition already. Someone has requested to have party status. So there will be someone who is a party to this proceeding besides, besides us and the county. I don't remember the person's name, but there is an individual who has requested party status.
Well, the board has done these in the past forever. This is, this DOA is brand-new to us, so it's not like we have not done this before.
Commissioner Drake, party status, what that means is, the parties to every quasi-judicial are the applicant and the county. Another person or group of people can request party status. That entitles them to actually act as a party, to call witnesses, to offer testimony, to offer argument, to be able to participate as a full party in the legal proceeding. So now that we've had that request, I will say, whether it's before us or the magistrate, you're going to have three people engaging in a full quasi-judicial proceeding here at the board level or at the magistrate level, or at least three entities, for lack of a better phrase.
Any comments?
I'm just, I'm just torn, because we sent East Nursery there, and now we're wanting to do this one here. So, I don't know.
Commissioner Drake?
Um, I don't know.
Commissioner Gladwell?
I'm pondering.
May I, may I offer one comment that may make it messier for everybody?
Thanks.
Thank you. My initial take on this was that because it's part of a DRI, and we only have a few DRIs for which we consider things left, that this probably would be one that would be well-suited to be kept before the board, rather than requiring our staff to go through a lengthier process of addressing DRI issues at the magistrate level. To some degree, that was kind of a courtesy to DOA, as well as it was allowing the board to consider those factors. I will say, I don't know what our September 23 meeting looks like, but this will be the first one we've had where we've actually had a third-party request to participate. So this is, if we do it at our level, I want you to go ahead and know it's not going to look like the ones we've done before. We're going to have to be rigorous. Okay, you're up first, you call witnesses, staff's going to have to get up, call planners. It's not just going to be an open colloquy testimony. So we may need to, if we do choose to hear it, we may need to look at scheduling it either on a date or moving it to one of those land use dates we have in the morning on a Thursday like we've done before, where we have a little bit more time to go through it, because it is going to be a much more regimented process. In that sense, that somewhat changes what I was going to say about the DRI and suggests that knowing you have an affected party that's going to want true party status and want to cross-examine witnesses, that may make it more apt for their rights and their due process to be preserved before the magistrate. I wasn't aware of that party status issue until yesterday.
Okay, so we still, if it does go to DOA, then we still have an opportunity to accept or reject the decision?
It's not just an opportunity. You're required to enter, you're required to approve or reject the magistrate's findings based on what's presented. Now, it has to be based on the face of the record and what the evidence is, but yes, the board has to approve every order of this magistrate.
And we know that, that the DOA judge would listen to the public.
If, well, I'm asking if you do it, make it part of that to make sure that the public be given the same opportunity to be heard, just like occurred with East Nursery, and I am confident Judge Van Wick will do it. Let me go ahead and ask, Mr. Tatum, I'm going to put you on the spot. I can't bind the third party, but I can say if the board directs the public be heard, the county's not going to object and override the board's wishes. Do you have any objection to public comment being offered in the same concept it was done in East Nursery?
I won't. The only thing I would do, like I would have done, but I did not have to, would be maybe object to someone claiming to be an expert who wasn't, or at least try to get, you know, let's ask them questions to see if they have the qualifications to be an expert, but that would be the only thing that would come up.
And that's ultimately up to the judge, anyway.
That's right.
So, I mean, you've got, I mean, I can't bind the third party. I can't tell you who this third party is, isn't going to object to the public speaking, but assuming it's a member of the public, well, I won't say. I was going to say I'd be shocked if they would, but I've been shocked before.
Go ahead.
I'm already on, on the fence on this, us hearing it or the magistrate. I, I'd make a motion to have the BCC hear this.
Can I say one more thing? I know we have a motion.
Oh, you need to see if there's a second floor.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay.
Got to pass it all, you get to pick.
I'm passing this to Ms., or Commissioner Gladwell, and I'm, I'm seconding the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any board discussion?
Yeah, when, when we originally had this policy discussion, the overarching policy discussion on whether or not the board wanted to continue to operate in the same fashion that we traditionally do, in where we retain the authority to make these decisions, or do we relinquish that authority and surrender it to administrative law judge process? I was the lone soldier in, in wanting to retain the authority here at the board level. And I still believe that we should have never relinquished that authority, but we've done that, and now we've treated one party from another case one way, but then now today we want to treat a separate party a different way, and, and that's inconsistent. So, I mean, I have to, if you guys outvote me three to one, I have to move on, but, but respect the process. I mean, respect the law, respect the process, and we've done that. If we want to have that overarching discussion on whether or not we get out of this, or we come back to the traditional methods that we've utilized in the past, I will vote to do that. But now that we've moved on, I mean, we're picking winners and losers, and I just, I don't believe that that's what...
Well, that's, that's a valid point. That's a valid, oh, sorry. Sorry.
You finished?
Yeah, so, so I would, I mean, I would have to say that we would relinquish it. If that's the standard that the board chose, and we've already treated one party one way, to do so in another fashion with another party, that goes against everything that I believe.
Okay. I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with you. I, I think the, the last one, since we didn't really know what DOA, anything about DOA, and wanted to, to try that, and, and we still don't know what the results are. We don't know much about that meeting. I personally haven't watched it, but I understand exactly what you're saying, and, and I honestly, I, I, I don't disagree with you that we need to stay, be consistent, and this is, this is just a really tough one. It's just really tough. But I want to be fair, you know? So if it's fair to, since we... So if it's fair to, since we started the last one going to DOA, if that's the fair thing to do?
Commissioner Curry?
I was one of the ones that voted opposite of Commissioner Drake, but I would reach out at this point after knowing, after watching what I watched and listening to the folks, if there is a separate motion made today to bring it all back to BCC, I would second that motion. Commissioner Drake?
Well, you have to do that by ordinance. You have to repeal the ordinance.
Okay.
That would happen to be in the next court.
All right. Do we have any other comments from the board? Is there any public comment?
Yeah.
And come on, I would remind you that this is about whether or not the board sends it to DOA or not. We're not arguing the issues of the case.
Can I say one more thing that I was going to say?
Why don't we let the public talk, and then let Mr. Tatum conclude briefly?
John Owens, and, yeah, I think going to DOA, I mean, retaining it, the board accounting commission is really good. I mean, actually, at the very beginning of the meeting, I think that was what the county attorney was saying, we need to let one come back, see how the process works, and that's the example of what would happen here. East Nursery, 20 days based on your memorandum of agreement with DOA. You should get your proposed order by then or later, and you can see how it works, and then you can make your decision there. And also, too, as a second part, which was brought up on the interested parties, the way I understand it now, the interveners were granted full rights to be interested parties in this lawsuit, or, I'm sorry, not lawsuit, this quasi-judicial hearing, and be able to call witnesses and tender their experts as well, ask the judge, recognize them as experts or the board accounting commissioners, and cross-examine other witnesses as needed. So that's basically, is that, my understanding, is that correct, that the interveners would be granted full party status?
That is correct.
Okay. And again, I do think the board, I would appreciate if the board does hear the case, and that's my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, whoa, whoa.
Good.
Oh, I'm sorry. Owens, O-W-E-N-S.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Ms. Morano?
I know the Owens just said they want to wait, but I just want to address a comment. I think you were confused, in my opinion, when Nursery Road came up. You could have heard it. I was surprised you didn't, but, you know, so I feel personally, if you go BCC, I don't think it's a slap in the face to Nursery Road. I don't think it's fair versus unfair. I think you all are struggling with this, just as much as I am. So I think, in my opinion, I would see, I would see no problem if you went with the BCC route, but I'm also hearing from the people who are directly affected, they want you to wait 20 days, but I don't even know what that would give you, because if the magistrate goes for the applicant, you know, that's not really what, I don't think they want to hear either. So I think the decision probably has to be made today, and I respect that you could hear it. I think you're smart enough to hear it. You've been through this before, and everybody would have their answer that day and not wait another 20 days. Mr. Atkinson's right. Sunliner is going before the magistrate September 25. This is one of my projects that I stood in front of the planning.
Yeah, let's don't talk about another one if we can, please.
That's fine. I appreciate that. So, you know, we have faith going forward with that process, so thank you.
You have faith going forward with the DOA process, is that what you said?
Yes, at this point. At this point, we don't have a choice.
Right, right.
But I have faith going forward from what I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this? Yes, ma'am. If you would state your name for the clerk when you...
Yes, it's Mary K. Owens, last name Owens, O-W-E-N-S. I just want to thank everyone. I know this is a very difficult decision for everyone. One thing that I would like to touch on, that Commissioner Gladwell just said, as well as Curry, is you're in this middle point here where you've got 20 days before the East Nursery comes back, which gives you the opportunity to have time to think about this, process it, and see, as your attorney had said, you have some cases, first test cases that are coming back. I don't see what the harm is in you saying, "We don't have to decide today. Let's wait for that case to come back." Fully understand the process. You're discussing making some amendments, as we had asked you to do, to the whole process anyway. If you continue down the ALJ route, you obviously have the option to decide how to do that. But I don't see that there's any harm in you saying, "We would prefer to get the results from this first case back, understand the process better, and then make the decision in the next time that you meet as to what you do at that point," because by that point, you should have your 20-day decision back from the East Nursery at that point. So I would just offer that that's a third option to you today, is to wait and see how the process goes and have some internal discussion about how well that goes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Different, sir, but I'll get you next, sir.
Chandler Huff, H-U-F-F. This process has been going on for a long time. We had two planning commission meetings. We tabled one for notices that Mr. Atkinson had advised us and thought it would be a good idea for us to do, which we did. Now we're in front of the board. We bought this property approximately five years ago. It's been a long process. Did all of our due diligence prior to purchasing the property. You know, if the board wants to hear it, I mean, we don't think it's fair that y'all send East Nursery and don't send us if that was the route y'all are going to take, but, you know, I keep hearing everybody talk about the difficult decisions. I mean, it's easy for them to say that when they're not paying interest on loans and, you know, the meter's running at the bank, and we've already put this thing off about three months from where we should have been, so, you know, if we go to the ALJ, y'all have the response back from the other one that just went to East Nursery. So in 20 days, y'all would have their response back. You'll see if you like it. By then, we will already be through the ALJ, which has got to come back in front of you guys anyway for your final approval. So I don't see any harm in going to the ALJ, which is going to be more of a, if they've already added a third party to it, it's going to be more of a witness-type standpoint anyways. I mean, it's going to be cross-examined by our attorney, their attorney, the judge who's going to be hearing the case versus the county commissioners, who I don't know if y'all want to get into that issue or not, but anyway, that's all I got to say.
Sir, did you want to speak? You're good? Anyone else? And we'll close public comment.
Well, let Mr. Tatum speak on your...
I was going to get to him.
Well, technically, it's public comment.
Technically, yeah, for the time being.
He has to be.
Okay, he's public.
Chandler touched on a couple things I was going to touch on, but we are at today 215 days since this application was marked complete by the planning commission. For the last six weeks, we've just been trying to get to a final hearing, whether it was with the BCC or with the ALJ. It's been a long process. Now, because it's so late in the day, and today would be the deadline to send out certified mailings for the 23rd BCC meeting that this is scheduled for, that's not going to happen.
Well, no, we've agreed the notices are going to stay active.
Okay.
If the board chooses to hear it, there are no more notices required of you.
Okay, all right. Well, then...
One way or the other.
Just write that. I need to let the engineer know not to send all those letters. But that said, you know, you will get another bite at the apple. You will get to review it. With there being a third party, the procedure would be better at the ALJ hearing. Just the flow of that meeting would be better than coming here and immediately jumping into a opposition testimony, evidence, my expert versus their expert type of situation, because we could get very deep into the weeds, especially from a planning standpoint. So I do believe the ALJ is going to be able to take the facts that are presented and condense them down to something that is easier to deal with, not that y'all aren't capable of understanding it, but you've got better uses of your time than that, and you pick the ALJ process for a reason, I believe, and I think that reason was to have someone who is used to doing these regulatory-type hearings on a regular basis to review a project and then give y'all a recommendation on what they think. So that was just still our position, and finally, and Mr. Atkinson probably will disagree with me on this one, but in my opinion, although we cannot be held to regulations that are passed during, while an application is being processed, this is a procedural thing. These are procedural guidelines on how a project is approved. That's my personal opinion that should we end up in an appeal on this project, that by not allowing us to follow what is currently in the county ordinances would be failure to follow what's called the essential requirements of the law, and that would be grounds enough to overturn whatever decision has been made. Now, of course, he's already fired.
I'm going to let you finish.
But then that's really...
Let's let the attorneys.
Okay. I was going to ask you to rewind that. I think I know what you just said.
I'll comment on it when he finishes.
And that's all I have.
Go ahead, Mr. Atkinson.
Mr. Tatum's point there is that should this matter go before the board, and the only way we would end up in an appeal situation in all likelihood, where he's raising that issue is if you deny the project, that he's asserting that he and his client would say that he believes the ordinance was passed and that they have an entitlement to go before the magistrate. Mr. Tatum was very correct, that I do disagree. However, what I would say is if we get into a position where we go through all that process and anybody appeals it, the most common outcome for judicial determinations of your quasi-judicial hearings is not to simply say the board's wrong and enter judgment the opposite way and grant a development order, it is to send the matter back for a further proceeding. In the event that happens, in all likelihood, it's going back before the magistrate. I will go ahead and tell you that because the matter will be considered a new proceeding starting at that moment in time, unless the judge directs the BCC itself to hear it. I don't think that will be the case, but I'll simply say this. The board wants to hear it, hear it. I hope the discussion here, and I'm going to put it on the record because I don't believe the intent is to disenfranchise Mr. Tatum's client or the public, if the desire of the board is given the specific nature of the project and the commentary that has surrounded the project going back to its earliest days, it's been going on a long time, then hear it and give it a fair hearing. But I'm going to tell you the same thing I've told you in many quasi-judicial hearings. If every member of the public stands up and says, "I hate it, it's going to ruin my life, I don't like it," that's not granted to overturn it. Too bad. You have to look the public in the eye and say, "And your evidence that it doesn't comply with the Land Development Code and Comprehensibility Plan, ma'am or sir, is?" And if they don't give it to you, you have to approve it. Don't take these projects, whether it's this one or any other one, back simply because the public wants you to exercise discretion you legally do not have. The moment we start doing that is the moment this county will find itself in a world of hurt, and I would tell you, please go look at some of the counties that are getting a great deal of scrutiny under DOGE and other things the state actually is reviewing. We're not having them here, but these are the kind of issues that the state is looking at where they're saying, "Well, you're not exercising discretion. You're not being fair in your process. You're not doing it." If you want to hear it, hear it. I would tell you right now, my recommendation would be to schedule it for the 25th, not the 23rd, and perhaps have it be the only item, because I can tell you this is going to be one of the more lengthy quasi-judicials now that we have three parties. We haven't had one in the last five years. The moment we have one, it is going to be one of the lengthiest processes. It's going to be a half-day hearing. Minimum is what I would suggest. I don't know how much time, Stephen, sorry, what you got on the 25th?
The actual ALJ hearing. I have something on that bucket. And there's three items on that, so it's probably going to be...
Well, but that's in Freeport. We could always have ours in the South End like we always do.
Just so you know, the planning staff will more likely be there.
All right, so we got to hear it on the 23rd. That's where you're going to be unless you go later.
Are you finished?
I am. I don't know why I'm standing here. I'll leave it there for my phone.
I would just say, and I don't really have an opinion on what we're talking, on the merits of the case, because I hadn't heard the case, but I will say this. We're getting really, really close to encouraging what I would consider to be jury nullification in that. What we're sort of winking and hinting at is that the board can be talked into doing something that a hearing judge won't be talked into because they're going to follow the law, and we wouldn't, and I'm very uncomfortable with that. I believe that we should follow the law just like a judge, and to say that, to say that we need to bring it back to us and not trust a judge is getting really close to saying we're going to nullify the law, and I'm not going to do that. So I think we need to let the judge have it and be done with it. Commissioner?
I know that we can't hold off the 20 days until the other one comes back. There's no way we can do that. That's not right. Therefore, I'm pulling my second.
Okay.
I'll pull my first.
All righty. Well, then we'll pass this back to you for further...
So you got to continue with the meeting. I am part of the committee.
Okay, well, is there any other motions?
The only other motion would necessarily be to transmit it to DOA.
Do we have?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor to transmit to DOA. Have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. And now I can pass it.
Anyone else?
No.
Public comment is done.
Meeting is adjourned.